Good afternoon, everyone. I'm councillor Penningill, chairing the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, January 28. Howlins, Swalens, Quists, Twitnam, Tula, Squamish, Mweywe. Welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. I have a motion for the adoption of our committee of action. Councillor French, Second Councillor Race, all's in favour and opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. So our first item of business, we have 10 minutes for the National Industrial Symbiosis Programme. Timo McKinnon. Do I have that right?
Close enough. Okay. All right. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay.
That's a mic up there.
This is the mic?
Attention.
Don't even look yet. Okay. All right. Okay, hopefully, the volume's good. And there was a slide deck. Is that able to pull up right now?
Would it be on the desktop? Is it on the desktop?
Oh, I see. Okay. Probably here. Okay. All right. Good. All right. And the most observant among you will notice that I am not Tracy. She sends her regrets. She is not well today, and she wished she could have been here as well. And she can speak to eco-industrial parks much better than I can. My name's Toa Mackin. I'm the Director of Operations for NISP Canada. And I've called these slides a big presentation we did for Cranbrook with a lot of the same issues that you're dealing with: greenhouse gases, community planning, green business, reclaim industrial land. So I wish I had more than 10 minutes, but I will talk as fast as I can and try to impart as much useful information as I can. So first of all, we are a branch of Lighthouse, a Vancouver-based not-for-profit. Originally created 15 years ago to work on green buildings, we all know the things like heat standard, helping with BC Stepford and so on. And we are the circular economy branch of Lighthouse. And there, we focus on two things: industrial symbiosis, a branch of the circular economy, and eco-industrial parks. And if there's an eco-industrial park somewhere in Canada, you can bet that Tracy has been involved with this under guard because she's a well-known expert in the field. I'm just going to work through these quickly. People know much more about eco-industrial infrastructure now than they did 10 years ago, and it continues to grow in importance. Things like bio swales are common, ground source heat pumps, cooling, active and passive solar, and so on. And each one of these, I could talk about for 10 minutes, but I won't today. Again, another component overlaps with the other work we do are green buildings. All manner of green buildings are being created. They're not just boxes that are well insulated anymore. My favorite one is the one in the top middle that looks like something out of Frozen. It's actually the waste heat plant in Copenhagen. They actually built a ski hill on top of it. So it's a lot of interesting creativity and multipurpose work going on now in the field. It's quite exciting. And in terms of operations, again, it's not just the building or the infrastructure, it's how do you use it? And how do you match the people, the tenants, and the businesses in that? And that overlaps with industrial symbiosis. And that term, I guess that's what happens. You give engineers the job of trying to market something. It makes them think it's industrial symbiosis. Whoever has the most syllables, the title wins. But really, it's a branch of the circular economy. And industrial tends to make people think it's just about industry. It's also being industrious. And it's a process, and if you've had a chance to look at the video, that Metro Vancouver shot up our initiative. It's a focus. We can talk quickly about it. Taking one person's trash, making another person's treasure. And we worked hard to match businesses and entities that can have or make use of other people's waste streams. And are utilized with unused resources. In nature, there is no waste, of course. It's just asked the dung beetle, there's no waste in nature. Humans are adept at creating waste that we have defined uses for. And the NISP programme that we use, that's been done in over 30 countries now. Started in the UK, and we have the great fortune of being able to use our UK consultants to help us transfer their lessons to us. So basically, they can be wastes, underutilized resources, waste energy, water, assets, expertise, things like underutilized warehouse capacity, trucking capacity, and so on. And this is just one quick example from the UK where it began. There are two industries in the same business park for many years. One is an oil and gas hose manufacturer that have insulation waste. The other was a toy manufacturer, and they met at a workshop of the same sort that we run. And they chatted a bit, "So you've got to pay to get rid of this waste?" "Yeah, yeah, it's benign stuff." "Oh, what's it look like? Is it soft?" "Okay." So the teddy bear manufacturer got this free insulation waste chopped up and stuffed some teddies with it. So far, we haven't connected to all the gas industry and teddy bears in our initiative yet, but, you know, it's still time. And if indeed industrial symbiosis is something that is desired, then NISP model has been shown to get greatest amount of it the fastest. And that's been endorsed by a bunch of different acronyms down below: the OECD, EU, G7, and even the panda people like what we do. And now it's mandatory in EU member states to formally consider industrial symbiosis as part of the national waste management strategies, and they have to report out on how they do that. We began in late 2017 in two pilot regions, Metro Vancouver and Greater Edmonton, and ran six of our workshops in each of those. And Metro Vancouver, that just shows a whole bunch of businesses, a geographic location. And Alberta, they actually drove 200 kilometers to participate. Quite interesting, very different perspective on travel there than here. And we had funding for 20 months from a number of parties, including the City of Surrey, City of New West, City of Edmonton, Metro Vancouver, BC Government, and the Feds. And in that time, we were able to get almost 400 people and actually individuals, universities, colleges, businesses, small and large, entrepreneurs, not-for-profits, all types of organizations and entities can participate. And got over 1,900 specific resources discussed. That's waste wood, waste plastic, trucking, warehouse, 1,900 specific kinds of resources from those workshops. And over 3,000 initial matches made. So the time that we had before funding ran out, we got 160 synergies closed and delivered a whole bunch of benefits. They'll talk about very briefly in a minute. Since then, we've expanded to work in the West Cootenies, in the area of Central on Trail, Lower Columbia. And we hope to help Cranbrook with their initiative that's very similar to the initiatives I've heard discussed in Squamish over this year. Quick examples: people actually are landfilling off-sec chocolate chips. We found Tartem's donuts in Vancouver who are willing to try and put them in their donuts. Spent pine palm all things, going to cosmetics. Multiple types of organic waste going to help create RNG, we hope renewable natural gas. And an interesting one, the Kruger cotton mill in Westminster. They have these large tubes in the middle of their paper rolls. They're eight feet long, about a meter in diameter. And one of our textile recycling partners saw those tubes and thought, "You know what? I even got to create a new type of warehouse." And she stacked them all along the wall of the warehouse and puts her bolts of recycled cloth in there. And the employees love it because they can slide it in and out, and Kruger doesn't have to pay to get these things recycled because they're quite large. So two very kinds of... Quick example, two very different industries or parties getting together to throw workshops. Another quick summary: in the pilot, a quarter million tons of landfill diversion, about 24,000 tons here to avoid it, and over $6 million in savings and cost reductions. And that's very important because we only do what makes business sense. Saving the environment is important, but the reason NISP has worked so well in over 30 countries around the world, in cities big and small, countries big and small, is because there's a triple bottom line benefit. One of the triple bottom lines being, of course, we have to pay salary, we have to make payroll, we have to run a business well. And a lot of pull points here, again, just reiterating the points I've made. On the far left, that's me visiting transcontinental textile recycling in Surrey. 50 million pounds annually of textiles come in unassorted, rebundled, repurposed, sent to all over the world, as far away as Africa. That's what got my eye down, that bundles. Gabio, interesting. Far right, that's the Edmonton Waste Management Centre. They're taking a portion of their organics and making ethanol with a company called Enterchem out of Montreal. In the centre, that's one of our workshops, people visually slipping down their ideas. So again, the EU bureaucrats, like long quotes. So this is my last slide. The gist of this being that more industrial symbiosis is expected and needed in Europe and elsewhere because it has worked. And we just finished a major study for Washington State. They want to implement a statewide industrial symbiosis strategy based on studies that they've done of what's going on in Scandinavia and elsewhere. So we are pleased to do a major report for them and advise them on how they can advance this topic. So reiterating, Lighthouse through NISP Canada. We have two things that may be of interest to Squamish Mayor and Council. First, we've got a lot of expertise and experience to help advance things like your biomass innovation park, both on the eco-industrial side and green buildings. And currently, we have some funding from the National Biodesign Network to kickstart industrial symbiosis in this region. And I just met the Vice President from FPAC, Forest Products Association of Canada. And with the long history of wood manufacturing and pulp and paper in this region, Squamish would see an ideal location to have a workshop here. So we'd be happy to bring that funding here. But question for councillor today is, okay, do you want to have our next workshop? And if so, how can maybe we can bolster the support and do a lot more work here than just with our initial funding? Hopefully, it's spoken quickly now.
Thank you very much. Mayor Elliott.
Thank you for squishing that into 10 minutes.
No problem. Hope you understood some.
Just quickly, I understand that your group's already met with our staff, so they have all the details on the costs and what it takes to participate in either of these programs?
I don't know if they have all the details. We know we've had a very good discussion over the phone with them once, and one other quick phone conversation. I hope they have all the details. Would be pleased if they thought they did. Happy to give them more if they need it. Councillor Anderson.
I'd like to just first pass on observation from having attended one of your sessions in Westminster in October of 2018. I was representing Squamish Can and the forest industry. Some of your key words: active versus passive, and I'm quoting from some of the reports that you have on your website. I learned a lot about industries and resources. I had no idea or expectation that I would encounter. And so that, your active role as a facilitator, I really came to appreciate that in your offering. The other, another benefit of facilitation you're highlighting here is that people just don't have time. And you're able to help and steer conversations and pursue them and encourage people to link up following the sessions. I experienced that myself. I wasn't able to keep up. I also encountered, we had about eight firms from the Sea Sky corridor take part and industries representing the forest industry. And they were trucking, salvage, tree salvage, construction, quite diverse. But not only that, capacity and expertise, several agencies that were able and willing to come to Squamish to help out with feasibility studies. These are my observations. The question I have is, if we were to entertain a session here, could it be tailored in some way? And could it encompass the region? And by tailoring, one of the things I have in mind is, and you've referred to it, the project in Cranbrook and here, it's not off the ground because we don't have a site. That is, we need a site to aggregate some of our bio-based wastes. But in the meantime, can we get started with some of your facilitated exchanges? I've seen this in the Washington Report that you actually recommend that you can begin with R&amp;D and facilitated industrial symbiosis. Before, you have a shovel-ready plan. I wonder if you might comment on those ideas?
Well, there's so much I could comment on. Every region has unique characteristics and industries, but despite that, our approach has always found initial solutions of some type. Even relatively small towns like Trail, people work in the same community, cheek by jowl, saying, "I never knew you did that. I never knew you had that." So I couldn't promise specifics, but I know we've uncovered something that would likely surprise people and be of benefit to businesses. And in terms of R&amp;D, we are connectors, if you will. We don't actively do the research ourselves, but we bring parties together to make things move forward. So by all means, and we've tailored workshops, different themes, agriculture, biomass. And the funding we have for the Biodesign Network, the reason they like this region, of course, is there's a lot of potential there. So I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but yeah, we can certainly tailor workshop approaches and invitees to try and move in a certain direction. But what we like, though, is we like having a diverse group of people in the room because the more diverse you, the better range of ideas and creativity. One comment, I mean, you can guarantee that Uber was not created at a Louisiana taxi conference, you know? Airbnb was not created at a hotel conference. There may be different kinds of ideas that come together and different kinds of thinking to really move things forward, we thought.
I just wondered, does it have merit to contact our regional district?
Yep, by all means. If they were to have some of this region, we broadcast at large. Even though we had six workshops in Metro Vancouver, nothing was on the North Shore. So I've already been talking to one of their councillors, and they're interested. So making a North Shore, you have somebody come from Lilwet in one of our workshops in Vancouver, so you could go as far north as you like, and North Shore in there. So you'd bring bigger parties than just locals here. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate the... Oh, councillor Storr.
Well, I was just going to say, I think that given council's strategic plan and our issues around waste diversion and our increased hopes for waste diversion, as well as our pillar around economic development, I think this makes a lot of sense. Thank you for coming in and presenting. Also, the partner, that's the Chair of the SLRD, Tony Rainbow, is sitting in the audience at the moment.
Oh, yeah?
So hopefully, we can throw those conversations there. My question would be to our CAO in terms of whether it makes sense to direct this thing on to one of our staff members for further follow-up, or if there's already something on the books that you are aware of.
Chair, I know that your organization has been in touch with our Economic Development Department, so there are...
Great. Thank you.
So should I just continue, follow-up of those staff members? Is that the most appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Good coverage. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, we put forward a resolution here then to that effect, to refer this to our Economic Development Department?
It sounds like they're already in touch, so I think it would be redundant. Excellent. And Eric has my contact information, so something should come to mind afterwards. So I'd be happy to continue our conversation. So thank you for your time. Thank you very much. So moving along, I'm going to catch up a little bit here. We have the Squamish Food Policy Council. Constance Wiley.
And Crystal.
Oh, and Crystal.
Hello, me too.
Yeah, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll just get set up here. Is there a, is the new one on here? Actually, are you sure?
Oh, councillor Race.
Yeah, I wonder if maybe Director Rainbow from the Regional District might be able to join the table. This is a joint agricultural plan, and probably what applies to Squamish applies to the Regional District.
Sure, it looks like he stepped out, but as soon as he got here, he was dismissed.
I told him he had to go talk to Timo, so.
We are presenting on Thursday also. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Thanks so much for having us. It's exciting to be here. We usually present every year Squamish Food Policy Council, and we haven't seen you since you've started your term. So we're a little late in the game, but nonetheless, we come bearing exciting news and fun things ahead. So most of you know, my name is Crystal, and I work with Squamish Food Policy Council as well as Squamish Can.
And I'm Constance, also working with Squamish Can and Squamish Food Policy Council. We'd like to recognize first that the work that we have done has been supported by the Real Estate Foundation of BC, Yourselves, District of Squamish, the Ministry of Agriculture, the Centre for Sustainability, Whistler, Vancouver Coastal Health, and the Squamish-Lilwet Regional District. So as some of you may recall, in 2015, the Squamish Food Policy Council created a draft of the food charter, which was brought to council and endorsed in July of 2015. Which, the food charter, for those of you who don't know, is really an educational tool to teach people, all community members, including leaders, about what is a food system, what encompasses it, and how might we start acting on it. And so just to give you some context, in terms of who's been involved, it's been over 20 organizations, over 40 individuals and citizens, and many other local governments. And then, sorry, we work with over 20 other local governments who do food policy work across the province. So while we work in our own little world in Squamish, we are also connected across the province and beyond to ensure that the work we do is sort of on track with best practices and keeping pushing that innovation moving ahead. So that's a little bit about the background of the Food Policy Council. I might say at this time, the Food Policy Council is sort of its own entity, but it is under the backbone of the Squamish Climate Action Network Nonprofit. So we sort of use those resources as a board of directors, as staff, as funding, and being able to apply for funding through the Squamish Climate Action name. A little bit about Squamish Can is we have a zero-waste action team. Sorry, we focus on zero-waste initiatives. Some of you might be familiar because quite a lot of our work actually has been collaborative with the District of Squamish. So you're likely familiar with many of these events. So our zero-waste team does all kinds of things around clothing swaps and the curbside tune-up, recycling audit, reuse at fair, et cetera. We have an energy and transportation team who's taken over the Bike to Work Week contract, and we host a variety of energy talks and movie nights. And then with the food system work we do, we have oversee the community gardens, we have a CD Sunday event, the Edible Schoolyard. We've ran farm tours and done many different things. And then from there is separate, is the Food Policy Council and policy work specifically. With that, though, is not just policy work, but it's also sort of loose-on-the-ground, grassroots initiatives also. The, a little, things that we've done to date is we've been able to create and maintain the Squamish-Lilwet food asset map. We've also been able to promote the Young Agrarians U map, which they host, but it's an opportunity for people who want land to connect with people who have land. So it's a really great program that's being used all across BC and expanding into Alberta also. We've co-hosted with the Ministry of Agriculture on an agri-food business planning program, which we saw over 20 participants at. We've participated in the National Food Policy Movement and hosted many, we've hosted a collaboration event, a workshop, where it was housed in Whistler, where people who want land and people who need land were able to connect and see if there was some opportunities for long-term leasing and things like that, and get land into production.
Great. And then a few other pieces, I guess going back a bit, when the Squamish Food Policy Council was first formed, one of the first projects they were working on was getting the OCP, or the development of the new OCP, was having food systems embedded in that. And that's been great as a guiding document, I guess, both for the district and for the work that we're doing, for what we want, the vision of what is our vision for food in Squamish. And that's allowed from there in 2017. With the district and the SLRD, had an agricultural land use inventory, which is our middle photos here. So that was scouting out both, I guess, aeroly on Google Maps and in person, driving, drive-by, drive-by, farm scouting. Just to have, give us a really good base of where is our agricultural land reserve, where is it under production, where is it cleared, what's being done on it currently, and like kind of given also idea about opportunities exist. And that document was very important for the agricultural plan, which will be presented on afterwards. So helped guiding that. A few of the other things that we try to do, though, is in addition to the policy work and, you know, the important but not as exciting things always, is bringing people together around food and building communities through food. And so this last fall, for example, we hosted an event called On the Table, which was a provincial-wide initiative of the Vancouver Foundation. And that, we had like 130 people come together for our Potluck Fruit Crumble and Sustainable Food Systems evening, and that was at the OCM Pavilion. And yeah, it was just a really successful event of bringing people together and talking about food. And all of this has been possible over the years because I've only been with the Food Policy Council for a year, but in advance of that, with Crystal and the other people involved, they've been able to leverage or fundraise over $108,000, which, a limited budget over five years, they've been able to really implement a lot of important work. And currently, just in the last, so in 2019, a few of the things we've been working on is we've been members of the Squamish-Tililwet Food Task Force, Regional Food Task Force, which the Whistler Centre for Sustainability has kind of brought together key organizations and people working in food in the region to come up with a bit of an action plan of where, what needs to be done regionally, how can we work together to support our food and agriculture community? And so we've got two actions that we're delivering on. One of them is developing a regional food procurement policy, which we have a draft of. And I've been in contact with Anthony in procurement over some discussions with him about what that looks like. And then we're also creating an educational inventory of all of the food skills, food and gardening, agriculture skills, workshops that currently exist throughout the Sea of Sky. I'm doing this in collaboration with a group in Lilwet. And then doing a gap analysis and creating an inventory of resources that people can then use to promote or create and strengthen already existing food skills workshops. And then we're also providing feedback on a brochure that's for real estate agents as well as landowners who own land within the agricultural land reserve, because there's a lot of confusion and then frustration that people have with what you can and can't do when you own ALR land. So we're helping hopefully bring some clarity to our real estate folks here. And, yeah, keep going. So we're also steering, oh, sorry, go ahead. Well, in the last year, so there may have been familiar, nationally, there's an initiative that's been building called the Coalition for Healthy School Food. In the last year, we've had a BC Chapter formed, and we are steering committee members of this, of the BC Chapter, and that's advocating for a universal healthy school food program. So we're involved in that as well. On top of the $108,000 that we've actually fundraised for the work that we do, we've also been able to help leverage funding up to $45,000 from the Investment Agriculture Foundation for both the ALUI and the agriculture plan with match funding from Yourselves and the SLRD. We've also been able to play a leadership role as part of a close networking group on the Squamish Valley Agriculture Plan Steering Committee, attending meetings and public outreach, help with funding support, provide feedback on the development and implementation strategy, which you'll hear about soon. And then we're on an ongoing basis, we're always fundraising and having conversations with future and ongoing funders about how we can ensure this work gets, this, you know, important work that gets done and can be covered. So that's a little bit about that. And so if you have any questions specific to the work that we're currently doing, we can ask that now. And then, of course, the agricultural plan-related questions can come to our next presentation.
Thank you. And just before I forget, I may ask you to stay at the table for the next presentation. If there's other questions, the councillor, there, councillor Anderson?
Yes, I have in front of me a copy of your Terms of Reference, and I wanted to ask whether, reflecting on your experience and your origins as the Food Policy Council, do you think that your model as an organization has potential applications elsewhere? I see that you have the district council represented, you have staff represented, you have a selection or an application process, you have an anchor organization that's doing administration, namely Squamish Can. Do you feel this is a successful model so far? And I ask generally because maybe other sectors could adopt it. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Eric, I don't, oh, sorry. So used to that. So I'm not sure if you're looking at the Terms of Reference from our website, but it has been newly revised to accommodate...
2017.
Yeah, yeah. So we have an updated one, still similar but different to really encompass the actual work that we're doing. In terms of the model, I think, you know, we've spoken about this during Squamish Can meetings before, that I think this model could be adopted to any field. I think it's, I haven't heard of other examples, like maybe a zero-waste team, or, you know, an eco-home team or anything like that using it. I think the Zero-Waste Action Team is already modeled like this without an official Terms of Reference. So it was important for us to have this as we sort of did go after some larger funding. And so it was important at the time. So, and it's been, it's served its, you know, it's served very well in making sure that we're on, you know, working on initiatives that are really housed under our intention. we're on, you know, working on initiatives that are really housed under our intention with the terms of reference.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So not seeing any other questions at this point. So fantastic, we've got a bit of time. I'd just like to add from my two cents though, that really inspired by the work you do and the way you work with the government, we try and do what we can for the community, but there's plenty of room for the community to do for itself and Squamish Can and the Policy Council is just an incredible example of that and for everything you're doing. So maybe if you could stay at the table and I'll invite Ms. McJanet up to talk about the agenda.
I'd like to actually turn the presentation over. My name is Sarah McJanet, I'm community planner with the district. That's for all the people that are streaming live, watching this presentation. We'll turn it over to Iomie from Upland Agricultural Consulting to lead off and we're going to tag team a little bit in the presentation.
Thanks, Sarah. And I just also wanted to introduce Alex McKay from the Squamish-Liluwet Regional District, who's here today as well. So as Sarah mentioned, my name is Iomie Smith. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm with Upland Agricultural Consulting. And along with the Whistler Centre for Sustainability, we've been retained to work on the Squamish Valley Agricultural Plan, and we're here today to present it to you. Just by way of introduction, Upland Agricultural Consulting has been in the business of working on agricultural plans for 10 years now. The Squamish Valley Agricultural Plan is the 15th plan that Upland's been working on and happy to be here. So just as an overview, we will provide you with a summary of acknowledgements, just to let you know who helped to fund the plan and who was involved in shaping the plan itself. I'm also going to be explaining the planning process and the engagement methods that we used, provide you a summary of the overall plan itself, and then we're hoping to have some time for questions and inputs. And then staff will be helping with wording and word crafting, the endorsement of principles as well, and direction for implementation.
So by way of acknowledgement, we wanted to start with an acknowledgement that Squamish peoples within the Squamish Valley have long used diverted and actively managed lands within the Squamish Valley, fishing, hunting, medicinal plant for cultivation and harvesting since time immemorial. And there are very unique relationships with food and plants that we wanted to acknowledge. Traditional and cultural foods hold very high importance in health, wellbeing and identity. Colonial impacts have eroded those relationships and altered traditional diets, causing health impacts for indigenous peoples. And so in the agricultural planning work that we have been doing as we kind of move forward to reconcile those types of colonial impacts and systems, one of the project objectives that we have seen is for this agriculture planning work has been to integrate indigenous knowledge, perspectives and considerations for supporting indigenous food systems and sovereignty within their traditional lands. And so we've set that intention and we have presented some actions to really try and deepen dialogue with the nation to build greater understanding. And so we can speak on that a little bit further. I just wanted to start with those elements.
Thanks, Sarah. So the project was funded in part by Government of Canada and British Columbia through programming that the Investment Agriculture Foundation puts forward. In addition, there was some matching funding from the Squamish-Liluwet Regional District, the District of Squamish, and also the Squamish Food Policy Council. I introduced Sarah and Alex, as well, you've met Crystal and Constance, who are on the Project Management Committee. We also have provincial representatives in the room through the Ministry of Agriculture, we have Alison Fox and Kim Sutherland, who are land use ecologists and regional ecologists, who were able to attend many of the steering committee meetings. We also have members of the steering committee in the room. We have Glenn from the Bracken Dale Farmers Institute and Peter Slade, who is a semi-retired food system scientist. And I don't see any other members, but we had a really great steering committee, we have still a great steering committee. We had 14 members who were wide-ranging representatives of the food system, from on-the-ground farmers to academics, students, and, and everything in between. We also had realtors such as Nestor's Market involved. So it was a really great group to have at the table to help with this project. The steering committee has met so far five times over the course of the year. The project got underway just at the beginning of 2019, and so the steering committee has already met five times.
Before we get into the agricultural plan, this graphic is presented to show the progression of recent work happening at the community level around food and agriculture planning over the last five years. And so this is, this work has all helped to advance food policy plans and initiatives. The need for an agriculture plan was originally identified formally back in 2013, I believe, as the district was reviewing the regional growth strategy and developing our own official community plan context statement. In 2015, as Crystal mentioned earlier in the delegation, the Squamish Food Charter was brought forward by Squamish Can and endorsed, and shortly thereafter, the food policy was formed. At the same time, the district has been doing a lot of collaboration work with the Health Authority, Vancouver Coastal Health, and we identified food systems and healthy food as a priority health area within our original collaboration agreement that was signed in 2015. And with grant funding from Plan H and BC Healthy Communities, we were able to facilitate a food deep dive with, in preparation for the official community plan update, and that resulted in the creation of a quite intensive kind of food policy chapter within our community plan. And also, so that food chapter basically sets out objectives, policies and actions for protecting food lands, improving food production and viability of the food sector, and integrating food assets and resources within our community. And also wanted to highlight that recent Economic Development Office work has identified agri-food as an emerging sector within the ecosystem, within the green economy. And so that agri-food sector is being profiled as part of the sector strategy work, so we've been kind of cross-linking work under the ag plan with economic development. And there's more of that to come. And, and also just noting here, the additional pieces that were mentioned earlier around the agricultural land use inventory that was produced by the Ministry of Agriculture in 2017. And, and that has really been a preceding piece to the Squamish Valley Agricultural Plan initiation in late 2019.
Thank you, Sarah. So I just wanted to take a minute to explain the geographic scope of the project as well as the objectives. So you can see it's quite a large area that we were looking at through the scope of the agricultural plan. It encompasses Squamish-Liluwet Regional District Area D, as well as the District of Squamish Municipality. The green, the dark green that you see on the map is the agricultural land reserve that extends pretty far out of the Squamish River Valley. And it's important to note that all of this land is on unceded territory from Squamish Nation. So the overarching objective of the plan is to provide a long-term decision-making and action framework to support agricultural viability and sustainable local food system. And under that, there were four objectives that were clear right at the start of the project that came through even in the RFP, and that was to identify opportunities and actions to support and strengthen agriculture, to protect and increase the productivity of the land base, to contribute to long-term environmental and social health and economic sustainability, but also to integrate indigenous knowledge, perspectives and considerations for supporting indigenous food sovereignty within the traditional lands and food systems of the region. So this graphic just explains the timeline overall of the project. As I mentioned previously, it's been about a year that we've had the project underway. Originally, the timeframe was a 12- to 14-month program, and it's, we're right on course with that timeline. So starting in the winter of 2019 is when we established the steering committee. We hosted a kickoff event, an open house and a survey. And then I wanted to note that there were two key components that were developed alongside the plan itself to sort of underscore the basis of information that we're working off of. One is a background research study, so that's a separate report in and of itself that looked at the biophysical capability and natural hazards in the area for actually undertaking farming on the land base. And the other one was a market opportunities assessment that was undertaken to look at specific crop and livestock opportunities and food processing, and look at what gaps currently exist within the food system in the, in the region and locally as well. And then in the fall, we undertook an implementation strategy workshop, which Sarah will talk a little bit more about as well. And so those are the, those are some underlying components of the plan itself. So while you have seen the plan as a standalone document, it's important to know that there's these underlying backbone pieces as well. So the original funding, the funder, Investment Agriculture Foundation had a bit of a say in the timeline as well. So we are somewhat beholden to wrap, beholden to wrap up this spring, and I feel like we are well on our way with the original timeline, which is great. We will be hosting one more open house, which I'll mention again in a minute. So in terms of community engagement, we used a variety of different methods. We, we know from experience working with the farming sector that simple emails and online engagement isn't always the best way to engage with those who are outside working all the time. So we really made an effort to get to the farmers themselves. So just by way of some examples, in addition to the steering committee meetings, which I mentioned, we had five, we hosted a kickoff event at the Bracken Dale Art Gallery. We undertook a survey, both far, both hard copy and print. So we had approximately, I think it was 100 results from the survey, but I'd have to double-check that number. We had two surveys, a farmer survey and a non-farmer survey. We attended the Ashland Creek Community Foundation EGM as well to talk about some of the objectives of the plan and to see where some funding opportunities may align. I attended an elders lunch at Totem Hall in August to discuss the plan and to receive some feedback on the initial recommended actions. We attended the farmer's market, the Bracken Dale Fall Fair. We also ensured that specific individuals were contacted by phone calls and in-person meetings as well. And as I mentioned, there's a final open house that's planned for next month on February So throughout the work of engaging with people, we heard a lot of strengths and opportunities that we could work from and leverage for some of these solutions and also to continue to build upon. But we also heard key challenges. And that's really an important part of agricultural planning, is to ensure that the key challenges are discussed and are addressed in the plan itself so that people feel heard and that specific challenges can come out the other end of solutions through the recommended actions and the implementation. So these are four key challenges that emerged. One was accessing land, either because land to purchase was too expensive or land to lease was unavailable. The other was climate change and natural hazards, particularly with being located in a floodplain zone. Navigating regulations is also a tricky one because there's often layering of regulations, not only around land use, but also food processing and food safety. And then the lack of some key components of infrastructure and services for ensuring that value-added products can be produced, marketed and sold both locally and external to the community. So, I'm laughing because this is a lot of words. So from those key challenges, a vision statement emerged. It's not unusual to have a very long vision statement for agricultural plans, and it's usually a result of people being very engaged in the process of developing the vision statements. So it's nothing to be shy of. But the fact that it was a somewhat wordy vision statement meant that a lot of key issues emerged. So I'll read some parts of it or just maybe touch on a few of them. One is that it became very clear that regenerative agricultural, ecologically sound, best management practices were very important to the farming community. The other was that climate change forms a lens through which everything is seen. There are, there may be some aspects of climate change that would be positive to agriculture and some that are negative, but essentially there's a lot of unknowns. And so being able to be nimble and resilient is key. The other one was around that infrastructure services that I talked about. So everything from processing, storage, distribution to marketing, to get raw products into something value-added and out the door into stores and onto people's plates was very important. And then also, as we mentioned, the importance of having traditional food systems and legacies between generations sustained is also important. So from that vision statement, there were six key goals that emerged. They are presented not in any order of importance, which is important to note. They are to expand and encourage agriculture and food production, to improve sector growth and market viability, to promote stewardship of natural resources and regenerative agricultural practices, to plan and prepare for climate change and emergencies, to align policies and strengthen regulations for agriculture and food, and to increase engagement, communication, awareness and education. So I think from the goals themselves, you can see that there's going to need to be some sort of integration between decision-makers around policy and regulations, but also community representatives for some of the goals and actions that are not necessarily driven by decision-makers and by government themselves. So 37 recommended actions emerged under three distinct categories. Some that are to be led by the District of Squamish, some that are to be led by the Squamish-Liluwet Regional District, and some that are to be led by the Squamish Food Policy Council. It's important to note that they are overlap in some of these numbers. So it's not that the District of Squamish and Squamish-Liluwet Regional District's actions are distinct from one another. In many cases, there's a need to work together to accomplish some of these actions. We also ensured that the urgency levels were ranked for each of the actions. So some of them are ongoing, may already be in the works, and we just wanted to lend additional support to them, continuous support. Others are considered highly urgent, medium or low, and some of them are ranked that way simply because some of the medium or lower actions require that something happened first. So in that higher ongoing category needs to be accomplished first in order for our attention to be able to turn to the medium or low actions. I wanted to provide you with some examples. I didn't want to list all 37, and I know you've had a chance to look through it yourselves. But just for example, goal number two, which was to improve sector growth and market viability, we have an action there to develop an agri-food sector strategy for the Squamish Valley. This is an example of an ongoing initiative that has already been started through the District of Squamish Economic Development Office. For goal number four is to plan and prepare for climate change and emergencies, and specifically action 4.4 would be to host educational events and workshops about flood risk management for agricultural stakeholders. This is an example where the district and the regional district would work together, and this is a highly urgent action. Similarly, with goal number five, which is to align policies and regulations for agriculture and food, here's an example of an action where both District of Squamish and Squamish-Liluwet Regional District would work together is to update the official community plan and zoning violence to better align the Agricultural Land Commission Act and regulations. As I mentioned earlier, one of the key components of the plan process itself was to develop an implementation strategy. It has been my experience working in other communities on agricultural plans that one of the key components of ensuring that a plan actually sees action on the ground is to make sure that this conversation happens early on and that the implementation strategy is essentially concluded and wrapped up before the end of the plan process itself. That's to ensure that everybody is aware of their roles, everybody has a good sense of what resources are out there, and that the timelines for implementation are clear. So what we've done is we put together a workshop for the steering committee back in December, and it emerged, we talked about different options for implementation itself. We put together the anticipated timeline and again, the estimate of resources that would be required. And we also put together a monitoring and evaluation strategy with six indicators for success.
So with the implementation piece, as Iomie mentioned, we looked at three different options in this workshop for leading plan implementation. So the first option was to consider a local government-led implementation primarily, which in other communities has typically been done by assigning that implementation leadership and role to an existing department or physician, hiring a coordinator, sometimes involving the appointment of a coordinator and working with an agricultural advisory committee, for example. The other option was to do something that was mostly non-government-led, such as the case in Liluwet. So with the Area B Liluwet and Statium Ag Plan, from that, there was the creation of LAFS, the Liluwet Agricultural Food Society, that was dedicated, that was a dedicated nonprofit to lead the implementation of that Area B Ag Plan. Then finally, we talked about and considered more of a hybrid approach that would involve local government, but also working with nonprofit. And so through that workshop, basically the consensus from the project team and in consultation with the steering committee, the consensus was that the hybrid approach really offered the greatest opportunity for success. Also, given that this is unique and that we have two different levels of government, the regional and the municipal, and also obviously engaging with the province as well. And so we had that situation. And also, we, you know, the district and the SLRD talked about the opportunity to talked about the opportunity to resource a dedicated sort of joint agriculture committee or staff person, but those were not really seen as operationally viable, given everything that both the regional district and the district have going on. So the final recommendation is for the Squamish Food Policy Council to act as the overall lead for the Squamish Valley Egg Plan implementation. In the report, before you, there's an attached proposal that presents detailed consideration and supporting rationale for the recommendation. And from an organizational, community capacity building and impact level, based on our experience over the last many years working with the Squamish Food Policy Council staff's position is that the Food Policy Council is well situated and positioned, capable and very willing with supportive funding to lead and convene local stakeholders, work with multiple levels of government, and has experience advancing sustainable food systems and food security initiatives in the region. They've been doing this for many years, since 2015. And so also, as an existing nonprofit under Squamish Can, the Food Policy Council is able to access additional non-governmental funding. So that's been demonstrated many times over the recent years. And the Food Policy Council was really instrumental in us actually mobilizing and getting the IAF funding for the agricultural land use inventory and then also for the egg plan itself. So the Food Policy Council is very much a group of doers and highly mobilized. And so to support the initial implementation of the priority items, together, district and SLRD staff and the Food Policy Council have looked at required funding. What is being proposed is a target of $20,000 per year per government, with matching funding being sought through external grants. For the District of Squamish for 2020, we have not dedicated funding in the 2020 budget. And in part, that was because of the timing for this project getting underway and when it was, and the timing of the plan's finalization. Operationally, there are a bunch of actions that are already sort of accounted for within our departmental work plan. So there are, there is work that will be able to be advanced. And basically, Squamish Food Policy Council has requested $5,000 from the district already to help support their work in Squamish Valley egg plan implementation. And then two days from now, on Thursday, the draft plan is being presented to the SLRD board, and there is a request before the SLRD board for funding for 2020, bridge funding essentially, $20,000. And so overall, going forward, and as I'll speak to momentarily in the staff recommendation, we will be looking to the district to bring forward funding for the 2021 budget for plan implementation. Very quickly for our next steps, subject to endorsement of the plan implementation strategy that's being presented today, we will look to move forward with formalizing the terms of reference to articulate the specific roles, scope and annual budget for our, for the joint work together. And then we will also be incorporating input, final inputs from council, from staff, from the public. And as Amy mentioned, there's a final open house that's planned for February 20th, as well as the final round of inputs from our steering committee. So we have four recommendations presented for council consideration today. Firstly, we are looking for council to receive and provide input to the Squamish Valley Egg Plan prior to its finalization. Second, we are recommending and asking for endorsement and principle for the proposed implementation framework in which the Squamish Food Policy Council takes the lead role in overseeing and coordinating the Squamish Valley Egg Plan implementation. Thirdly, and subject to the first two recommendations, staff are recommending that the district, together with the SLRD and the Food Policy Council, in collaboration with our many community partners, that we finalize our terms of reference for the plan implementation and to support its implementation moving forward. And that's subject to final endorsement of the egg plan and the implementation terms of reference, that a budget proposal for the district's 2021 budget be developed for ongoing and high-profile action implementation. That's enough. So that's of the progression of staff recommendations. And with that, we would like to open it up to questions and council and input of, and input from council so that we can move forward with plan finalization. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. McJanet, I noticed that the text is slightly different between that and what's in our agenda. I think the intent is, you know, identical. Can we get the agenda copied just up so we have that in our minds for?
Yes, and actually, that is my bad in that I actually paraphrased to make this a little bit more readable. And so the staff recommendation formally from the report I can read out, or quickly, I don't have it up here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, if, okay, so yeah, we'll move forward. I guess maybe just to get the time, if we can try a round of questions and then take a second round of comments. Uh, so councilor Stone.
Thanks so much for the presentation, for all the work done today. My question is, I'll narrow it down to action 4.2A in the plan is include agriculture in the District of Squamish's Community Climate Action Plan. The urgency on this is high. I'm cognizant that our open house for the Community Climate Action Plan is on Monday, and a lot of, I think, the detailed inventory components have been completed. And so I'm just curious as to whether this has been done yet or if it's, and if it hasn't, then if actually calling it out in this way is the best approach, or whether we want to change that language a little bit to consider kind of the timing of where those things are at.
Thank you. Through the chair, I think that's a really fair point. And the train has been moving forward with the Community Climate Action Plan. So we've been trying to like board the train as it's moving. And so I think to that point, and this was sort of crafted a while ago, so with that in mind, I think some edits to the language to frame that more accurately would be appropriate. And so we can definitely look to do that. And I think more broadly speaking, I think agriculture on climate and sort of emergency management planning has, has not been kind of front and center or included. And so I think intentionally, what we're trying to do is shift that so that as a sector and that the focus on food and agriculture really is embedded more in a, in a much more intentional way in all of our work going forward.
Great, thank you. I have another detailed point on action 2.4 around support local procurement initiatives. And I know that Katson earlier spoke that she mentioned that she had been in conversation with our procurement officer. But the current lead on that is Squamish Food Policy Council and the DOS Ed Dev Office. And I'm just not sure if that's the right lead from a DOS perspective for that specific action item. So that was another thing that I just liked when I was reading through.
Counselor Anderson. Two questions to begin with. A map, the only map I've seen in your report is at a probably 30,000-foot level. And I'm just, maybe it's a recommendation that perhaps for your open house, you do have maps. Do you have some more detailed maps that can give the public a better grasp of the situation on the ground? I think that'd be very helpful for buy-in, especially for here in the Media Valley, in here in Brackendale, for example. Secondly, you, under page 24 of the plan, you're discussing policies and policy work that's happening. It's quite an ambitious list, Ms. McJanet, and it is identified as high in urgency. It's quite a list of bylaws and policies that need attention. I wondered if there's any, has been any discussion about prioritizing those? It seems to be quite a workload among the other things we're doing in bylaws, in the bylaw area. I wonder if you may comment on the prioritization and scheduling of that work?
Thank you. Through the chair, and just for clarity, I think that's under action 5.4A.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, there, as we've moved through this agriculture planning work, what we've, what this has helped us do is sort of apply that agriculture lens to a lot of our existing bylaws and regulations. And for example, the tree management soils bylaw, those regulations, you know, water conservation. There's a lot of bylaws that have an interface with agricultural land use. And so the most priority updates that we wish to initiate and undertake will be around our zoning bylaw update firstly. And so that work has already been scoped and will get underway, subject to finalization of this plan. The zoning bylaw overhaul that Matt Gadd is leading, I will be supporting and tag teaming with Matt through agriculture zoning within the District of Squamish. And so that's the priority to start with. And then subsequent to that, we will sort of do a review and see what, what are the next bylaws that we want to tackle. I think opportunistically, too, there's, you know, when there's other amendments that are coming forward from time to time for these other bylaws, we'll be able to link in with those amendments as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Elliott.
I have a couple of questions around section 5, 5.5, which is around compliance enforcement, and 5.6 around cannabis production. So in terms of our ALR land, what are some of the compliance issues that we need to deal with? And then it also has one about identifying enforcement issues related to non-ALR land. So I'm curious about that as well.
Through the chair, so with 5.5, and feel free to jump in if I'm not on the mark here. I think overall, in compliance and enforcement for farm land protection, there has been a lot of discussion through the entire process just about activity, non-farm use activities that may be occurring, are occurring on ALR designated lands. And so I think there's just a, this action really relates to increasing education, increasing compliance. And I think it really, it has come front and center for us within the Area D and the SLRD. Maybe Alex Mackay, if you'd like to speak to that as well.
Sure. And I think part of this action is trying to kind of frame this relationship working together between local government and the ALC, working together on compliance and enforcement. It's certainly a challenge from the SLRD standpoint, having, you know, one bylaw enforcement officer for the entire regional district. And so it can be challenging to deal with all of the ongoing issues on ALR land. So just working together between the SLRD, District of Squamish and ALC to find ways to develop partnership and work on those, dealing with those ongoing issues.
But are the compliance issues around non-farm? You say, so are they around buildings or like what is our biggest challenge right now?
I would say, yeah, I mean, it's kind of both. There's a lot of non-farm uses, so things like campgrounds that haven't gotten approval, haven't gone through the ALC approval process. Non-residential or non-adhering residential uses, so people operating, basically are be haves or have lots of cabins, proliferation of cabins, multiple residences on the property.
Events.
Events, yeah. So often that the issues around non-adhering residential use are also tied to events like weddings, to gay places. Those are the two kind of major issues that we see.
Okay, and then on 5.6, I thought the ALC had clarified the rules around growing cannabis on ALR land. So I'm wondering what work is still outstanding?
So the ALC has said that it is a crop if you're growing it in soil, but local governments still have the right to restrict it if it's being grown indoors. So that was more specific to that piece around fill for the construction of indoor cannabis production facilities. So that's one piece of it. And then just basically ensuring that, because this is a moving goalpost type of issue, just to ensure that it is something that is kept tabs on, so to speak, because the rules and regulations do keep shifting.
So we don't need to set parcel sizes or minimum parcel sizes?
That would be up to council.
But there's no recommendation in this?
So the SLRD has its own cannabis bylaw. And so because the SLRD already has one in place, we didn't want to come in with specific language on how to craft one. But it's something that the district may want to look to the SLRD to make sure that there's an alignment there, since as you saw on the map, you know, most of that, that land under scope was within the SLRD. But it might be something worth checking for alignment in terms of overall policy and regulatory scope.
Counselor Reese.
Thank you. I just wanted to clear up the budget ask, our potential budget ask. So if I understood you correctly, 2020, as far as the district is concerned, there's a $5,000 grant application in place, which I don't think has received final approval. We have maybe pending approval from our council. And then with the SLRD, Director Rainbow just showed me something that says the Pilk Fund ask is about $20,000 for this share. I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Sure. Through the chair, and just to clarify, the ask from the Squamish Food Policy Council to the District of Squamish is $2,500 for?
No, sorry. So we had asked for five through the, through Squamish Can and the Community Enhancement Plan. And then we had received a letter recently saying that we were successful in half of what we asked for. So we successfully have, were allocated $2,500 to the Food Policy Council as of last week, and we received that.
So that secured funding for the Food Policy Council will help to support some plan implementation. Beyond that, the $20,000 ask is for the SLRD, Area D.
SLRD, Chair Rainbow.
Okay. Yeah, because it says $20,000 from Southern Pilk Funds, which is not just at Area D, that's something in cooperation with the district. So I don't know whether you need, whether you can make a decision on that, Mayor Elliott, or whether you need a council or not. As far as the Area D is concerned, if we're going to commit any of the, of those Southern Pilk Funds, it has to be cooperatively with the district. So I see it's on as a, as a resolution for Thursday. I don't know whether... There's money, there's money in it. Well, the history of this account is it's never been used yet. It's been accumulating the last probably four years, maybe five years. There's a fair amount of money in it. And the arrangement that I have with the previous mayor, because there was, there was no information. So the arrangement I have with her was that instead of developing a very tight policy on this, we would just agree that the mayor and the director of Area D would agree on how the money should be spent. So if everybody's comfortable with that, then I can have a chat with the mayor and we'll be prepared for Thursday morning. Do we need to develop something to be a little more tighter, more controlled here, probably?
Can I suggest that everyone, sorry, sit down for a bit, go around and see if there's anything else and try and tie this one up at the end, maybe? I did make a note of that we have to come back to this later. So any?
Fair question about, there was a $5,000 applied for, and you received $2,500, so you want another $2,500. Is that right?
No, there's no financial ask from the District of Squamish for 2020.
You asked for that five and you got $2,500. So are you going to be asking for another $2,500? Would you like another $2,500?
I might just say something quick. In the implementation plan, which I know Sarah has provided you, there's sort of a breakdown of what each action item might look like. How much staff time is it going to take? Are we going to have to spend money on other resources, booking space, materials, resources, et cetera? And so we've sort of, we've created a draft proposal of a few examples of high action items that we might focus on. So essentially, the more money we have, the more we can do, obviously. And so you can refer to this document as a bit of an outline. On average, some of the actions could cost a few thousand dollars and some might be as high as eight, nine, 10, 11 kind of thing. Of course, whatever we receive will be still, as Ray says, will be leveraging additional outside funding, too.
May I add for clarity? Also, if the timing of things had worked out differently and we were presenting before the district's budget had been finalized, that we would also be requesting $20,000 for 2020 from the District of Squamish. But because of the timing, that wasn't possible this year.
So just while we, you know, I do think we should maybe come back to this. Just for our context, I'm wondering if staff can have ready when we circle back to this in a few minutes, our contingency fund is and where we ended up? Do we want to have an understanding of our numbers? Do we want to have an understanding of our numbers? Not seeing that, okay. All right, any further questions from the council? Mayor Elliott?
So given that the district has a climate emergency, I was wondering, you know, about high intensity water crops, like would we explicitly rule some things out, given that in the future, water wouldn't be at a premium likely in a climate scenario for our valley, based on our adaptation report that we got a few years ago? And so what is the role of the strategy to sort of point farmers and landowners in a direction where we do want people to do regenerative farming and we do want to avoid maybe high intensity dairy farming, or we don't want someone to plant rice patties, or, you know, that sort of thing, or cranberry crops, or unless we can show that it's sustainable? So where is that balance? Like, how do we put this to find the limits across an industry that both contributes to greenhouse gases and also can help to mitigate, although that part I don't understand as well?
Sure, so through the chair, thanks for that question, that's a really good question. Part of the agricultural land use inventory that was conducted before this plan was to get a snapshot of what is currently happening on the ground. And with that information, an agricultural water demand model was actually created. And it takes scenarios around drought, extreme drought, also extreme wet years, and it calculates on average how much irrigation is required now, and then at full sort of build-out scenario of farmland, what also might be required in the future, using different models of different crops. So it has a lot of that information in that report, it's dense to go through, but the numbers are there. There is water, so if you're along the river, there's water, it's surface water, right? If you have the licensing and there's also groundwater as well. But you raise a good point, is we don't know what the future holds with regards to it. We have some idea that there might be heavier rainfall in the spring, drier summers, and so on and so forth. So without the ability to control what people grow, because right now legislatively, we don't have control over what people grow, the best we can do is arm folks with information. And so a lot of these actions point to just that. A lot of them are educational in basis, and a lot of the work that the Ministry of Agriculture is doing with farmers, new farmers, new entrant programs, is to provide them with that information. The Environmental Farm Plan program is a really, really exciting and important project, and that is also one of the actions of the year, is to promote that. So I think in doing so, the information will get out there. The farmers that we spoke to are all very keen on ensuring that the practices that they are undertaking are, you know, the best possible in terms of technology, in terms of conservation, and that is the way forward with agriculture. But insofar as, is there anything you can do to say no to certain types of farming? Legislatively, no.
Okay, thank you. One addition to that, if I might, as well is through the agri-food sector strategy work as well, in terms of really promoting crops and specific practices within that work in terms of attracting new investment in farming as well. So there's a kind of proactive lens that can be applied to the agri-food sector as well.
Counselor Anderson, and maybe start into your comments then as well.
Very good. I note that throughout the report, there are references to the interest and efforts to engage with Squamish Nation. And I'd like to outline three suggestions in that regard. First of all, it's not generally aware, folks aren't generally aware of this, but the, each of the reserves in this corridor were set up for farming, and they were chosen for farming, and they have a long farming history. And that history is something that especially the elders today are proud of. In the 1960s, the largest fruit orchard in the valley was at the Calten Reserve, and the only you-picked strawberries were at the Squamish Reserve, City Baker granted. So that's a history that they're proud of, and I suggest that that history is something that is maybe of interest to create interest and buy-in and participation. Secondly, we've learned through our conversations with Squamish Nation leaders that there is efforts to undertake some silvicultural planning work on Indian Reserve Number 11, and that's been a longstanding project. But I suggest that we should be careful that we're not working in silos, that that silvicultural planning work on that very large reserve with so much potential should be integrated with agroforestry, and I'd like to come to that. So that silvicultural plan is being funded by certain envelopes that maybe are forestry-oriented. Let's make sure we're not working in silos, because there's a lot of potential for integrated management there. So agroforestry, we have in our audience a couple of representatives, at least from the Ministry of Agriculture. The Ministry of Agriculture has outstanding extension resources in agroforestry. And in the report, I only see one category of agroforestry referred to, and that is silvo pasture. But two others are immediate interest and not least for Indian, or IR 11. Forest farming, Harold Macy's four-story forest concept, that he's pioneered on Van Kuran and the former UBC research farm there, and integrating crops, four stories of the forest, literally. And that, and finally, integrated repairing management. I'm looking at the Ministry of Agriculture agroforestry website, and that is a defined category of agroforestry, which is certainly applicable here. You can do all kinds of tricks and technologies born from agriculture in our repairing zones. And I suggest that that is properly under-encouraged in the report, but can be built upon, and there should be a lot of opportunity to build relations with Squamish Nation projects and communities, villages for, in those, in that area.
Any other comments? So I'll go to Counsel Reese?
Well, I was just going to comment on the staff recommendation, so I think maybe before I do that, I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Counsel Reese, second by Mayor Elliott. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So thank you very much, and this has been a great lot of work in a year. I remember the first conversations around it, and it's certainly come a long way. I'm not going to get into the budget discussion. Part of it, I think our budget is not quite finalized yet. We didn't have this in front of us when we made the budget, or made our decisions to date. I don't want to speculate on what might happen, but it's not quite finalized yet, so we can still think about that. I'm not going to interfere in the discussion that might happen between the Chair of the Regional District and our mayor. Leave that to them. But just on the recommendation, one of the key parts of the recommendation is having the Food Policy Group take, take the sort of the lead role in this. And I was thinking, when Crystal and Constance were talking, you know, in my first term in council, over 10 years ago now, and this thing called Squamish Can came along, I think everybody was, holy smokes, what's this? What are they going to do to us? And it somehow survived and grown to the point where now I think you are one of our institutions in our area. It's a credit to, for all the work you've done over the past year. So I have no difficulty with that, and then taking the lead role in this, and so I'm happy to endorse this and go forward with it.
Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. I think when the Food Policy Council comes and one of your mandates is eating together, you should bring food. Because when I was the council rep on the Food Policy Council, there's always food. Anyway, one, it's great to see this plan come together and watching this evolve from passing that first food charter motion to now, and now looking forward to a sector strategy, education, is really exciting for me. And one, I want to thank the Food Policy Council for driving this work, and I think it is a model that works really well. And City Hall can't simply get to all of these things, and so it's so important to have community partners that are willing to drive the work and the momentum sometimes. And I just want to thank the ministry for being there with us for this whole step. It's been so wonderful, wonderful to have a senior-level ministry that has, you know, walked us through, with us over the years. This is really exciting to have you here today, because I think this is really meaningful work for Area D and for Squamish, and I'm looking forward to the next steps. So, yeah, thanks very much, looking forward to supporting this motion.
Counselor Anderson?
I'll pass, thank you.
Counselor Herford?
Yes, thank you. In reading the report, I, it was a great educational piece for me. I've been involved in not much ALR discussion in our area and at other conferences and things I've attended. My fellow counselors from across the province have expressed it's the main thing that they work on in areas in the Fraser Valley, and it's always back and forth. So I'm glad to see this come forward and highlight the areas that we do have and the work that we can all do together to make them more effective in this. And so thank you for all the work you've done, and I look forward to seeing this progress ahead of the year. Thank you.
Counselor Stone?
Also very happy to support the motion on the table to the specific piece around having the Squamish Food Policy Council lead the work in collaboration with both governments. I think that makes the most sense, and thank you for the deep dive that you did during this process to have that conversation around implementation, because I fully agree that that's often where the transition of planning to implementation will involve. So thank you for thinking that through and for having those conversations. Happy to support that going forward. And just to echo the mayor's points in terms of the amount of collaboration that has come together to make this plan happen, is really a testament to all the hard work and the importance of farming in our community, and I think that that continues to shine through, and so looking forward to seeing this continue to evolve. I will also just flag that the next item on our agenda is around resolutions, so Low Mainland Local Government Association, which then go forward to UVCN if supported. So if there are elements specifically that are coming out of the egg plan that require larger advocacy to the province, that's kind of a really good window of opportunity for us to think about, so we'll just flag that with the group.
I will also be supporting this. I did have a comment, and then before I call the board, I'll just double-check that I've captured the council comment. My own, you know, reading through the actions and so on, I felt they really captured the discussions I'm hearing and demonstrated an awareness of some of the challenges we're facing in terms of climate change and some of our desires to build community, to have local food resiliency and those sorts of things. There are a couple pieces that suggested to me that we're still going a little bit of a transition in some of our thinking, and so a couple of examples of that, you know, talks about growing livestock, which, you know, hearing about veganism is one of the things you need to be doing to deal with climate change, and whether or not we're there yet, maybe is a separate discussion, but should we be incentivizing or pushing growth in livestock production? That was a question for me. And then when I looked at some of our indicators, our measures of success, and this is a generalization, so it's not absolute, but they pushed a lot more to consumption, more use, more exploitation of the land as quickly as possible in sort of dollars and cents, and let's get it going. Whereas in the action side, it felt a lot more like, you know, let's really pay attention to First Nations practices and sustainability and all sorts of things. So there's a bit of a disconnect there for me, and so that might be one area where I would suggest that just having a bit of a second look at. But overall, I thought this whole plan really captured what I'm hearing from everyone around the community. So the other comments, Counselor Stone, you had a couple specific ones. One, the reference to the Climate Action Plan.
4.2A and 2.4.
Yeah, and the second one was with regards to who the district contact is. Okay, I had a comment that to make sure that when this goes to the public, we have detailed maps to give people a clear picture of the situation on the ground, a suggestion that we work really hard to avoid working in silos, especially when it comes to operations being pursued on reserves. And Mayor Elliott's comment, I think in a way mirrors my own to a degree about just making sure we're getting that adequate balance around climate in terms of what crops we're doing and what things we're looking forward to. Does that affect everyone's, everyone heard? Okay, so I will call a question, all those in favor? And unopposed, motion carries unanimously. And was there any desire to have a discussion about the funding thing, or we're all happy to have the mayor, with Mr. Rainbow?
I'd like to make a comment before people are. I'd like to add my thanks to your presentation today. When the district first contacted the SLRD a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, about doing the inventory, my reaction then was, what a good idea that was for us to be working together on something which wouldn't make any sense for the SLRD to be trying to do something in the district. So I'm really happy that we're doing that, and I think going into the future, we might also want to think about, or making sure that we're cooperating and working with the Agricultural Committee in Area B and the one in Area C, and the group in Whistler, which is a state, the Whistler State of Northern Ireland. Because again, I think the more we can work together on it, the better. So thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you at that stage.
There's a request from the Food Policy Council for a little picture.
Yeah, we want to get a group photo. How do you feel about that? Great, I hear a show.
Do you need a standing, or?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe we could just all gather around like one side of the room and, or...
Okay, so maybe I will recess the meeting until quarter two, and that's your bio drink as well. We're back briefly to talk about LMLVA resolutions. Mayor Elliott, do you want to set some context for this? Did you have anything in mind?
Nope. Well, is that time of year again where we're gearing up for our, all of our area association meetings across the province? And UVCN prefers if resolutions have been vetted by area associations, so they get a sense, their resolution committee, about whether there's broad support. So our resolutions are due, I forgot what your due date is.
March 5th.
March 5th, thank you. So we actually have a few meetings to sort of toss this around, and so today was really just a first chance to get some ideas on the table about possible resolutions, and then if there's some research that our staff need to do, or that we need to do as counselors to go and develop these resolutions further, then we've got a bit of time to do, rather than do at the last minute. And also, staff may have some that they want to put forward, so we want to give them the heads up, that if they're seeing policy issues, that they would like council to take forward for lobbying, if there's that opportunity for them to win as well. So really, today's a brainstorm and an initial conversation, and we'll keep putting it on the agenda right up until when we have to submit them.
Thank you to the chair. Every year, in preparation for this discussion, the services staff will go back through minutes with a detailed search on if there was any point in the meeting where a council said, hey, bring that forward for resolutions. This year, there was not anything, but enough. In terms of staff items coming forward, we did have a robust discussion about that, and there are some items that we prefer to not talk about.
Mayor Elliott?
All these resolutions have become public resolutions, so if there are things that staff wants to take forward, they've got to figure out a way for us to take it forward, so that's fine. I do have one.
Yep.
One of the things that I would like to put forward, and I may actually reach out to my counterpart in mission, is lobbying the province for more RCM funding for tourism destinations, so more provincial resources. So what we're finding, it's interesting because the RCMP are here, next, is that our officers are sometimes being used outside of district boundaries to respond to calls that are often related to people visiting the area. And when I brought this up at the meeting that the sort of Lower Mainland RCMP had with the mayor's cross of Lower Mainland, I saw a lot of head nodding from some of the mayors from the Fraser Valley. So I may reach out to the mayor of mission and see if she wants to help me craft this, and see if we can get some port from the Fraser Valley as well, so that it be a joint. Anyway, that would be mine, is that we figure out a way to put this into words that makes sense to the province, we're more funded for tourism-based economies. sense to the province, more funded for tourism-based economies.
Anyone else? councillor East.
Well, my only thought was just coming out of the discussion we just had and going to staff to see if there is anything that we might take this opportunity to move forward. And I don't want to speak for the SLRD board, but given the nature of that particular plan, it might be a joint submission. So we'll just leave that with staff for the moment if there's anything that might come up. And we can raise that subject again. There's going to be a presentation if there's a SLRD board and we'll just raise that with them.
councillor Anderson?
Yes. Last year, I raised the topic of natural resource roads as a potential topic for resolution. And I, we had other things to do and I didn't have, I wanted to do some more research and I since have. So about eight to 10 years ago, there was a proposal by the provincial government to come up with a Natural Resources Road Act and the central challenge to address was how do we pay for road maintenance, keep them open for recreational users in particular. The challenge is, is that the only people the government gets money from to maintain these roads are resource industries and it's always been a difficulty. And what is happening, as it turns out, since then, the government is not going back to revisit producing an act and a new policy, set of policies at this time. Instead, they're shutting down roads. And so I have made an inquiry with local foresters, in particular because there's been a forestry conference recently, the truck loggers convention a couple of weeks ago and one coming up in February, to see where this topic of natural resource roads is for the foresters, our local foresters here, including Jeff Fisher and Tom Cole, former manager of the Chukmas Community Forest. And I've heard a little bit back, apparently it is very topical and that there is a real concern and it's a concern to industry as well as recreational, the path that the province has taken, that is to cut costs and liability by closing down roads. And it's happening all over the province. And there's another gentleman in the north that is taking this on as an issue and that is councillor from Van der Woon, Brian Frankel. And another person who spoke up at the truck loggers convention was the Community Forest Association Executive Director Jennifer Gunter, who is very concerned, representing community forests about the implications for community forests, they tend to be so heavily used by recreation. So in a nutshell, I propose that we can take this on and with the experience from last year, it seems to me for resolutions for the UVCN and for this upcoming, they don't need to be detailed. And the chamber resolutions are quite different. They need to be very much researched and reviewed and so on. But something at a very high level stating the concern that who uses the roads, recognizing the challenge of who pays and who benefits, but to push the province to recognize that the public has an interest and we need more investment or other solutions towards maintaining resource roads. And it seems to me and our forester friends agree that Squamish is a good place from which to put up this resolution. At one last point or two, I discussed this briefly with Natasha Goldbeck and I'd be happy to confer with Natasha about her advice and experience on this matter, but also that it could be an idea to work together with the SLRD because there are several SLRD folks up in Area A and nearby that this is a perennial topic for them. So it may be something to work on together with them and that's about all I have for so far. So natural resources roads as a resolution topic.
And just before I go to Mayor Elliott, councillor East, can you clarify your reference to the joint recommendation?
Yeah, you mentioned joint submission, but I wasn't here for the earlier conversation so I don't know what the joint submission is.
On the topic of, on the topic of resolutions?
Yes.
Oh, it was related to the agricultural plan and any recommendations or need for resolutions that might come out of it. And that plan is a joint plan between the District of Squamish and Squamish Low Regional District. So possibly if we decided there was something coming out of it, the SLRD may as well joint in, so it would be a joint submission to the Lower Mainland Local Government Association.
Thank you for that.
Mayor Elliott?
Yeah, through the chair to councillor Anderson. Are you talking about roads that are still unused by industry? And what is the possible therefore statement here?
The therefore statement is to ask the province to give attention to adequate resourcing for maintenance of natural resource roads used by multiple users, recreation as well as industry. So a close by example is the Matrum Forest Service Road. And we've heard discussion in our discussion of the Squamish Canyon proposal and in the campground, their camping issue, we've heard accounts of the protocol for a blindfoot permits and who pays and how it's determined who's going to pay for the maintenance. It was all very complicated and it's all needing review and especially dollars from the province. The province has no means to collect monies from recreational users. That's the problem. And maybe it's time to give up on that and accept that there needs to be general public investment in these roads. That's the therefore.
So, sorry, I'm just trying to get clear because this issue is not going to impact the majority of the Lower Mainland LGA. So it's got to, when we get to it, and so this is just my advice, if council wants to move this one forward, is that it's got that therefore statement is going to have to be really clear because maybe some members in the Fraser Valley and ourselves, this will be meaningful to at this first step. Obviously, there'll be more people that this will resonate with when it goes, if it goes to UVCN, but also the distinction between like roads that are within our district boundaries versus roads that are outside of municipal boundaries. So anyway, I think there's a lot of complexity to this and the therefore has to be clear and this provincial government is not spending money on it right now.
So that's a useful point. Within the LMLGA, I would suggest that the issue is acute in the Fraser Valley and similar to here. Also, the last municipality that took this on at the UVCN happens to have been Whistler, concerned about road deactivations. So thanks for that point and I think that that's very important. We make sure that context is looked at.
councillor Franch?
I've definitely had some feedback around tiny homes as a tiny home issue and I have already started to do some consultation with some folks who are concerned about tiny home issues. Where I'm starting with this is to find out what, if anything, has already been taken to the local government association and UVCN as well. So once I've done some more homework on this, I'll report back.
Mayor Elliott?
Through the chair for clarity, is this about changing the BC building code or which part of the provincial mandate are we looking at?
Through the chair. That will be part of my research to determine what this is.
If there's a provincial issue?
Yep.
councillor Franch?
Well, I wanted to flip the idea. The thing that I seem to run into a fair bit is our highway in every intersection on our highway. And I'm curious on what, where, which pieces that we carve off that would apply to other areas as far as I'm thinking getting sort of our high accident intersections addressed in a timely manner. And I'm not sure the best, I obviously haven't got to the, to a concise enough idea on that to put forward a specific motion, but I'm curious to kind of look at that further and see if we can boil that down or perhaps that's already leveraged as hard as we can to get those things done. But there's definitely some challenges there. We need help from the province to, we need the province to move on.
Mayor Elliott?
Through the chair. So because it needs to apply broadly, one place to look would be highway maintenance road standards. So right now, there's no requirement for reflective paint and so if you try and drive our highway in a rainstorm in the winter and also they sometimes, when they repaint, they pave over the fog lines, so then you're left with nothing. So one, we could do some research about what are the road standards for some of these main highways, provincial highways and whether those could be upgraded. And two, from a climate emergency perspective, we could see if there's been any resolutions about roundabouts on highways versus getting people to stop and idle. So one of the things that would improve flow, at least on this stretch, is that if people didn't have to stop, they had to slow down and go through a roundabout. But that might be another way that you could improve safety in some of these intersections is just, and this is used all the time in Australia. So that could be another, you won't find necessarily nano support for traffic circles, but from a climate perspective, they may go a lot faster. So those are two ways that I might suggest we could come at this to improve safety is look at the standards and then look at.
I was, I was waiting for you to put regional transit in there as a, to tie in the safety measure with our particular highway, but I, which is obviously a concern, so thank you. I can do some, some looking in those, in those areas.
councillor Stone?
Well, since councillor Franch did bring it up, I think we can't not have the conversation about whether we want to put something forward with regards to regional transit and/or the ability to use gas tax outside of Metro Vancouver. I think that we would have support from many colleagues in the other court.
Northern.
Fraser Valley, thank you. And probably more broadly, especially as we go up towards UVCN. But there's a context piece there, but just checking in on whether that's an approach we'd take.
Mayor Elliott?
Through the chair, we're currently trying to set up a meeting of the Sea to Sky Transit Committee to both talk about our next round of lobbying efforts and also our submission to the TransLink 2050 plan. But maybe this is another topic for conversation is to see if there's a joint resolution from the Sea to Sky that might support that.
So just my two cents, I've got a whole list of things that I need to call and refine before I bring anything forward, I think. But as I was thinking through these, the one thing that was in the back of my mind is that UVCN and a lot of other events, people at, councillors in other communities and people in communities that, I tell them I'm from Squamish, I think Squamish is in a real sort of unique position, leadership in terms, especially in terms of a smaller community. And so I'm looking to, you know, with what I think about putting forward, you know, how can I really have an impact? And so that's just kind of in my mind a little bit. I think people are looking to us to be that leader.
No ideas?
Well, I've got a bunch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, we have the RCM here and I think I need to refine them first. So anything further from anyone? Nope. Okay. I guess I will welcome, oh, Mayor Elliott?
Well, we kind of need an action out of this, so that, maybe through to our CEO, are there, could you sort of designate some staff people to work with the councillors that have raised issues? So like even Natasha can work with me on our CMT issue, maybe someone from engineering or can work with, what's your name, councillor Franch? And et cetera, like if we could pair people up with the staff who have some expertise or guidance, that would be helpful. And then we'll bring them back to the next committee of the hall.
councillor Stone?
I suspect there also might be something coming out of the Community Climate Action Plan that might be worth flagging as we go through this. So that's just something to keep in mind as we move forward as well.
ms. Gande?
Through the chair, if I could just get clarity on what councillors at this point you'd like staff to pair with. So I heard RCM with Natasha, with Mayor Elliott, someone from engineering.
councillor Franch?
councillor Franch.
Regional transit? Someone from planning or building with councillor Franch? See if there's anything around tiny homes?
Another right plan is probably the similar.
Is it the intent that councillors will have a pretty strong idea of what they think the resolution needs to be and staff will kind of vet it or the idea is to kind of develop the resolution with staff?
Have a conversation with staff and, I mean, I think it's something for us to meet, but we also need their expertise and make sure it's aligned with their operational plans and where we're trying to go. So, the other place is thinking councillor Franch that is, talking with some of the passive home builders is that the BC building code is quite prescriptive on, like you have to vent your stove to the outside, but in a passive home, you have a system that recirculates air and so whether building might have some resolutions around changes to the building code to allow, to make it easier for Step 5 and passive homes to be built, I don't know. It's just something that I've heard through the building community. And if there's any tiny home.
ms. Gande, is that?
Who would work with councillor Anderson?
I've suggested ms. Goldbeck.
Oh, yeah.
With her background in the camping issue and the recreational. I may also suggest for councillor Franch's proposed resolution that this is a very big topic for the Climate Action Plan and that there are a couple of resource people there that would be useful to tie in with and the timing may be good with their open house coming up for that plan. I'm thinking of Bob Deeks and Chris Baker, actually, and our building department, all taking part in this very intensive discussion about building code and where we're going.
councillor Franch?
Thank you. The, when I started thinking about the, about the challenges of the highway, I was thinking mostly around the intersections as I think about this a bit more. Does this pilot project like speed over, the speed over distance comes in, might come into play as well and has that been supported enough? Like where we, if we have any context there?
Mayor Elliott? The average speed over distance doesn't have broad support. I'm not even sure it has broad support in the Sea to Sky. And so, and generally, there's just a real desire to stay away from anything that feels or smells or looks like photo radar, which is, this isn't, but, so that's some context. And then, yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, we are advocating for our own intersections as probably everybody else is along the highway system. That's why I was trying to take it up another level.
No, that makes, that makes total sense.
How do we, you know, the fact that water pools on our highways, to me ridiculous. If you're safety concerned and so what are those standards? You know, if you're driving in the Autobahn in Germany and doing 200 kilometers an hour, do you think there's a pool of water on the Autobahn? I would hope not. That's not the Sea to Sky highway, but you know, there are large puddles that form during rain, form during rainstorms and you know, when you've got people going on Facebook to communicate with each other prior to their drive about what to look out for, there's probably something wrong with the highway standard and all of the drivers.
Okay, I just have one. Okay with that conversation? All right, so I will welcome ms. Goldbeck now, Sergeant Banks and, is it corporal, corporal insurance?
Nope.
Inspector, inspector, inspector Franch.
She's boss.
Well, that's all right. I don't know on my rank and where they are. How about all of them? And also welcome Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Franch.
Gareth is fine. We're on television, we've got to be formal.
All right.
We should have had an extra 30 minutes to have met up before this, but we had a pursuit happening today on the highway. Has anybody saw or witnessed anything? A little distracted and delayed by about 30. This is all going up. We left them in Vancouver, but.
Really going up?
The long and the short of it was, we looked like we were scattered 15 minutes ago. We were trying to manage operations and do presentations at the same time.
The highlights are just when you're done. Thank you. Ladies, come.
You mean saying?
Personalized.
Oh. That was a gift, I think, part of a gift from another detachment. So we're ready to go if you guys are. Okay, here we are. Just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to present today. We come before you hopefully twice a year whenever possible. We try and work into your schedules, which I understand are very busy, based on the planning that we've done with your team. And just be able to report on how we're doing with our strategic plan and allow it to roll over into the next year. For those of you who are present, you'll remember that we set these priorities for 2019 through to 2021 last year. So this is a two-year strategic plan and we're reporting to you in its cycle to just give you an update about where we're at. Some of this information has been brought forward in other discussions, but we really want to report to the community here and be able to share our story at large about the larger initiatives that we've got on the go and things that we're looking forward to in 2020. So I actually just going to speak really quickly on this photo right here. I had to look back, Sasha was working with me on this presentation along with our comms team, and I had to check that this was actually a 2019 picture because you'll see my daughter in there beside the bucket and I, she's about twice as large now, it feels like. And I looked at this and said, it must have been two years ago, but in fact, it was only six months ago. And that's how quickly things are flying by in our world right now. So great to see this picture and was just, I felt like a good way to start this summer season as we rolled into the new strategic plan. It felt like it set a framework for where we wanted to go in the next two years, building relationships with our community that is extremely important to us. So one of the things that I just want to highlight as we present to you here is that you remember that this is your strategic plan for your community and aligned with your community's objectives and goals. Through the Municipal Policing Unit Agreement, we set priorities and we align our priorities with the work that you're doing in your community. We're the service provider on the contracts that you have with the province of BC and municipalities of, in BC, there are contracts with the provincial government and we, the RCMP, are your service provider here in your community. Obviously, we work closely with our, our partners such as West Vancouver PD. They also have a contract with the, or West Vancouver has their contract with the province of BC, but they contract out their municipal forces. So lots of, lots of recap of information here, but just important to set that information as we go forward. A review of who you have on your team here, and these things change all the time, as you know, with the RCMP, every four to five years, you start to see changes happen at one or two positions and levels, but myself is your officer in charge. You have with us here today Gareth Bradley, he's your South Zone Commander and he's responsible for Squamish all the way through to Bowen Island. Your Operations NCO is Damon Mayle and he's acting in that role right now. Key point here is that Sergeant Dan Pollock has been promoted into that position and he's coming to us from the Okanagan. They were here this week looking at houses and buying here in your community and he comes with a spouse who will be working up in Whistler. She was previously a domestic violence, sex assault investigator in serious crimes and so we're thrilled to have her on in Whistler to be able to train our new DVSE position that will mirror the one that you guys have had here in, or sorry, here in Squamish for the last two years. And so just a neat compliment to the team there. As you guys know, they work all very closely, particularly on issues that stretch like that across the corridor. Excited for that, that team to arrive. We've got Jeff Shore, who's your plainclothes commander, Angie Kermer, who is your SOAT Team Leader, and Amanda Daly, acting as the admin manager for all of Sea to Sky. Sasha Banks is new to her role in September of this year as the Operations Support NCO, but you'll recall that she was the SOAT Team Leader before, so she's now supporting my position as my Ops Support NCO, working on lots of different things across the corridor. And Kimberly Labrenz is acting in the admin manager role. She deals primarily with your municipal employees in our detachment and has a very close connection with the team here at the District of Squamish on all things managerial responsibilities. So our strategic plan framework, which was set up in 2019, is refreshed annually. We work on specific work plans that, that highlight our priorities and help us to address some of our initiatives. I'm just going to make this a little bit larger, give me one minute here, sorry. So this strategic plan here is one that was built for your community. The RCMP is often seen as a national police force and an entity at large for the nation, but we tailor make this again for your community with work priorities and work plans that are important to Squamish. Our strategic plan is a Sea to Sky detachment plan, so we have the same priorities in Whistler, Pemberton, Squamish and, sorry, the same pillars in Pemberton, Whistler, Squamish and Bowen Island, but each community has their own work plans and initiatives that are particular to the community. So where seasonal workers might be extremely important to Whistler, here in Squamish, we work on our long-term residents and how we can connect with them in a, in a meaningful way there. So differences between the communities. Just a recap of our priorities that we've set for 2019 to 2021. Crime reduction, road safety, community outreach and engagement of, community outreach and engagement, and engagement and connection with our Indigenous people, and investing in our people, meaning our employees there. So across the Sea to Sky, we have pillar owners for these that oversee these from a greater push, and this is among our senior management teams. So Gareth Bradley, he works on community outreach and he really works to connect the work that's being done in Pemberton, Whistler, Squamish and Bowen to try and connect these, these communities from a policing perspective. We have all talked about this many times before, but policing is across the corridor. In fact, it was a great example of it this morning of, of what was happening out there operationally. We do not see criminals stopping at the border of Squamish, Lions Bay, Whistler. They are working the entire corridor and it's very important for us that we have managers who are looking at this from that perspective as opposed to in the individual communities and silos. I have, sorry, just breaking down into who's highlighting or who's working on each one. Jeff Shore is our Crime Reduction Lead, he's a plainclothes commander and works on multiple projects that cross the corridor. I'll highlight a few of those throughout this presentation. Paul Hayes is working on the Road Safety Initiative and has led some interesting projects across the corridor on that one. He's our Whistler Zone Commander or North Zone Commander. Gareth, we've talked about his community outreach and myself as investing in our people. Dig into this a little bit further as we go forward. Crime reduction, large umbrella here, but generally speaking, this is our project work that keeps our property crime or violent crime down and it's focused really on intelligence-led policing and making sure that we are running projects specific to the intel that's coming into us as well as an analytical look at the crime that's happening in our communities. So work plans were set to focus on enforcement, education and prevention. And within those, each of our teams has different areas that they're focusing on. Just want to speak about a few highlights for this and where we really dug into this here in Squamish. You'll recall that through a few of these incidents that hit the media that we had, or sorry, actually, I'm going to back up to the spring. We've had some prolific offenders that were working across the corridor. A project that our Crime Reduction Team focused on had to do with pulling together police forces from the Okanagan, lower mainland police departments, other RCP detachments and focusing on vehicles that had been stolen, break-in enters that had happened across the lower mainland, but ones that were specifically linked through intelligence to our Squamish break-in enters that were happening. So through a proactive intelligence-built file here, we were able to front-load this and arrest two individuals coming into Squamish in stolen vehicles and recover a significant amount of property that connected to break-in enters across the lower mainland, returning a couple of bikes to Squamish owners that were thrilled to get their bikes back and being able to forward charges on this greater prolific offender that tagged warrants out for across the, across the lower mainland. So these are the kind of things that you'll see when I talk about intelligence-led policing, our Crime Reduction Team focusing in on. Just recently in December, we had a home invasion which resulted in a break-in enter to a stash house where drugs were stolen here in Squamish 24 hours later, although we can't draw formal connections at this point. We believe the files to be connected. Mayle was located at the bar and arrested and charged with unauthorized possession of a firearm and a loaded firearm in his possession. That individual, I checked today, is still in jail, awaiting charges. He's been able to be held not only on that file, but some other files that were outstanding. So things like this that you'll see that team dig into. And obviously, we've talked about this a lot before, but this, the amount of time we put into our prolific offenders or these high-risk offenders within our corridor is deeply correlated to the unallocated time that we have to work on files. So in August of 2018, you'll remember there was the international incident at the, or an event that made international media at the gondola. That has required a significant amount of police resources. That mischief and damage to the gondola has drawn our serious crimes team into a lengthy investigation. That investigation is still actively ongoing. We have put a lot of work into it. We're working with multiple lower mainland detachments as well as divisional units that have assisted us and we still continue to work that file actively right now. So I share that information because I think it's important context to think about as we work these crime reduction files and intelligence-led projects, we're also balancing it with the serious crimes that we have in our area. Yes?
Just the GC acronym under Develop Fraud Awareness Programs?
Government of Canada.
Government of Canada, thank you.
Oh, sorry, no, this is gift cards. I apologize. We, I'm looking at two things there, I apologize. So the development of the fraud awareness programs, this is gift card and rental frauds. And actually Sasha, you can speak to this a little bit more because you implemented this program in your solo, so I'll let you speak to it.
Yeah, so this will start rolling out come March when taxing comes around. So the idea is that the gift card fraud situation is for Squamish specific and the rental fraud is more for Whistler specific. So this is where you see some of the initiatives split for communities and are based on what you're seeing in the community. So when it comes to Squamish, we will often see frauds where somebody, everybody's heard of the scheme where somebody is told to pay their tax bill via going to London Drugs and purchasing, you know, $2,000 worth of. IQ gift cards or Speedworks gift cards or, or whatever. So the idea was is that we were going, and we got support from the District of Squamish because I had spoke to Natasha about this already some time ago, and we've worked with our E-Division Crime Prevention where we would go to the businesses that sold gift cards and anybody but be purchasing over $100 worth of gift cards would be provided with a pamphlet to talk about fraud awareness and just to be told by the store owner, then therefore the clerks, about these types of scams and to contact the police if they had any concerns. So the idea was that a lot of these frauds happen overseas where the, the individuals who are committing the fraud are, are outside of our jurisdictions and that is more of a national thing, but when we come to it locally and protecting our own citizens in our community, that it was more of awareness to the people who were purchasing those gift cards or Bitcoin or what it would look like.
Thanks for that. So as we begin to focus on education around crime reduction, one of the things that we're excited to bring to the Sea to Sky and that we've partnered with School District 48 and Abbotsford PD to implement is a It's a No campaign. This was delivered in Abbotsford for an anti-sexing or sharing of sexual images among youth particularly, but it could be anybody. We're delivering this in the schools in all middle-aged, sorry, middle and high schools in the Sea to Sky corridor. This campaign is one where we flood the youth with information and start conversations through about a 35-minute presentation around what it is to share sexual images when somebody asks for a photo, what the implications can be, how far that can go, and just really creating some awareness and education around sexting and the impacts. We're starting this important conversation because we've seen the emotional impacts that this has had on individuals as they've been engaging in these conversations, the long-term effects that it's had on youth who have succumbed to either the pressure to share that or who have found themselves in possession of these images. So road safety is a important pillar in the Sea to Sky. It's always one that we focus on when we think about our highways and then again, when we drill down and get into our communities. I know in this community particularly, we've talked about Safe Reeds to School as a very important initiative and you'll have seen our, our team get behind this and advocate for this work. We also work really hard to partner up with our schools and, and our September, October focus around schools was key. You've seen us get into the neighborhoods in some of our really important areas. We had our Integrated First Nations Unit partner up with our general duties, police officers and do some work in the First Nations communities that were reporting traffic's concerns as well. So we really understand with road safety, the importance of not only connecting this to our neighborhoods and our communities, but also the highway and the greater transit through this community. We were really pleased and I love that this photo is in here because we were really pleased to bring our police officers on e-bikes to Squamish during our warmer months this year. We found that our officers could cover an immense amount of ground on the e-bikes, but also the police visibility on their off-road paths was an excellent, an excellent outcome for us as police officers. We were thrilled to see the statistics Gareth gathered, some reports on this, on number of contacts made, checks at camp rooms, interactions with individuals in areas that we wouldn't otherwise get to or had difficulties making connections with when we were out in our police vehicle. So we really valued this and that information that we were able to take through the stats keeping that we did from this. We're going to try and make this an annual project and deliver this through a more structured seasonal policing program. This was a bit of a pilot this summer, carving off resources where we could to make it work. Gareth got very creative and filled those shifts and did what he could to do that. So that was great. We're going to try and see how we could do that a little bit more formalized this year because we tested it out to see what kind of success we would have and if it would be met with a positive reaction from the community. It was, so we're going to see what we can do to formalize that through some internal realignment, we'll call it. So continuing to focus on our ICBC calendar this year, including impaired driving and cannabis education, things like the ICBC Road Safety Calendar, which picks a different issue every month, whether that be distracted driving, safe, sorry, school zones, et cetera, to really continue that engagement and that focus. We're also shifting a little bit of focus onto our seasonal policing initiatives. So we've talked about the bike and the e-bike, but there's boat patrols and snowmobile patrols that have worked into this enforcement campaign a bit. We noticed that this area, particularly if you look at the Forest Service roads near Brom Lake, some of the areas further north as we hit into Whistler, there are a high number of snowmobile owners that come up and access this area. There's protected areas above the community that are patrolled now by our police officers on, on snowmobiles, generally funded through a seasonal policing funding that we get from the provincial government every year. So we carve off our resources and use specific funding for that. Just trying to increase our presence in these areas and make sure that we are dealing with some of the issues that we're seeing around licensing, around usage and access to areas that are otherwise closed or protected. Boat patrols has been something that we've also focused a little bit on. We need to make sure that our police officers are proficient in the use of our police boats, that they are able to access the water, not only for responses to calls for service, but to be able to access areas that we would need to police. We've talked about this in planning and the importance of making sure that our police officers have that training. We know that that training is a very perishable skill and so we've worked very much on a training plan to make sure that the police officers have the acquired training that they need, but it's not just about going out and taking the four-day course, being able to operate the police boat. It's actually getting out and being proficient in the use of the boat so that they can maintain that skill. And so making sure that we build that ability within a small contingent of police officers that can cover off our coverage and be able to respond accordingly and be ready as we move forward with some of the police implants that we've discussed. This one I think is a great photo. It always is wonderful to see the, the impaired driving goggles in use, particularly those who are still developing their prefrontal cortex and their decision-making skills. We get a lot of feedback from the youth about this and the experience that they get. We have also really focused on the increased enforcement. We have also really focused on the increased enforcement in our...we'll see this through some of our road safety statistics later, but we focused on our road checks. That was an area that we saw was down in 2018 and 2019. Gareth's management of this has definitely increased the number of checks we're doing and as well the number...the amount of enforcement that you see as a result of impaired driving, stops and roadblocks. Wonderful event, the naming and launch of this canoe this year, great success. Like I said, it was a beautiful event to be a part of and really, I felt like set the table for how we wanted things to be framed up for 2019, 2020, and the relationships that we wanted to build. So, focus on that vulnerable population, including the youth. And we saw that every time we put that canoe in the water and we saw youth and police officers pulling together, the connections that are made in those informal experiences are ones that last a lifetime, but they also allow us to go back into the schools, which we're doing on a regular basis, to get in there and really form connections with those youth in meaningful ways. They see the presence of a police officer having done something like this and then a police officer in uniform, and it just changes the relationship and the conversations that we have. So, on that focus of community engagement and Indigenous people, we've done a lot of work within our schools, School District 48, the Cultural Journeys program. I just had a brief scan through our annual performance plan, which does monthly reporting on all of the initiatives that our police officers are doing. And there are so many different events that they attended this year when it comes to community connection. I was really proud, I took the time to acknowledge them today, to just be able to summarize the Cops for Cancer events, the open houses, the coffee...Cops of the Coffee, the presence and events that they've had at things like the Sikh Festival, the schools, the monthly meetings at the Swamish Nation for crisis meetings, you name it. It was just a list of all sorts of events that particularly our SOA team but also our frontline members have been engaged in, and just truly appreciative of those presents that we've had and then the connections that have come from that. So, we're starting to see some of that work through our statistics when we look at domestic violence and we look at sexual violence and the work that's being done there. Again, we've talked about so much of this being hard to truly test for statistics, what is the result of relationships being built in our community with calls for service or relationships with our stakeholders and our important service providers at, let's say, the How Sound Women Centre? And how does that meaningful connection that we have with the partner agencies translate into policing services where we're giving a better policing service to our community? It's hard to touch on that, but what I can tell you is a police officer of 20 years being embedded in the community is in. I'm in, I know that great work comes and great things happen when we build relationships with people in our communities and they are able to approach the police in a way that breaks down that barrier between police uniform and meaningful connection with a police I was...I speak about those partnerships a little bit, but one of the things that we've had this year, that change that we've had is one of our police officers, Dustin Furnassa, has assumed the youth role. Brayden was in that role last year and he's gone back to Ontario. Dustin Furnassa is in the schools. And a great email that I received this week from one of the senior management team at the School District 48, Director of Instruction, who said that the relationships with the schools this year have been outstanding. So, just kudos to Dustin, who took that role on in September, who's gotten into the schools, who's partnered with the principals, and who is making really meaningful connections in those schools. He just returned home from...I'm going to get this wrong, Regina, at Depot, having brought a youth out to the youth academy there and didn't want to be highlighted for this...yeah, an Indigenous youth to the youth academy. He didn't want to be highlighted for this great work, but we've told him that he's going to be highlighted anyway. So, they went to the training academy together, they participated in a week-long youth academy, and then have come back to the community and they've partnered up with other police officers and Indigenous youth from other communities to participate in this week-long youth camp. We're on the early stages right now of connecting with the Swamish Nation and having a police officer attend their youth camp that they have every year here in the community, and so just trying to see how we can be connected to that program as well, just again focusing on these relationships and what we can do to increase our presence in the community. Lots of great work being done on community policing and the internal revamp of that position. We have our community volunteers meeting that just happened, Garage 529 planning meeting for the spring, just lots of things rolling up and getting ready for rollout right now as Gareth assumed that role in the community policing position. Investing in our people is something that I believe strongly in. I am proud to be the owner of this pillar, and I truly believe that if you invest in your people and you prioritize the health and wellness of your people, including education and training, you're going to get great police service delivered. And so, I think if your police officers are burnt out, they're not trained and they're not up to speed on the latest legislation and policies, they feel inadequate to do their job, and you end up with a police force that doesn't deliver on those results that you expected them. So, this has been something that I've put my heart and soul behind. I'm excited to have a team that's been supporting me wholeheartedly behind this, and I look over to Gareth here, who's been my champion of the mental health issues within our community. We've talked a lot about this, but the number of police suicides that have happened across the country are at an alarming rate. And for me, making sure that our police officers are healthy and well and able to come to work in a engaged and connected...sorry, engaged and ability to do their job is there, right? They've got the headspace to do that. That has really been something that I wanted to see happen here in the Sea to Sky corridor. So, a couple of things we've done on this regard, we developed a challenge point for Sea to Sky and selected different police officers to be highlighted at internal briefings when we could. Sometimes these things can't get brought out into the public and they can't get talked about amongst the community, but there's great work that may have been done with, say, a victim on a file or calls for service that they've attended. So, just on that internal recognition piece, acknowledging police officers. We did a recognition for police officers who are leaving the community and working on highlighting everybody who's come in as opposed to just having our police officers change over, really feel like they can be acknowledged for the work that they've done during their time here and their commitment. We brought in some mental resiliency training for all of our police officers, including a trained clinician in the area, and built up our list of RCMP-approved service providers, which is a really hard thing to do. We have a stringent RCMP and health benefits program that screens our providers and makes it very difficult for police officers to access anybody other than an RCMP psychologist. And so, here in the corridor led by Gareth and myself here, we've been able to bring on a couple of counselors that are clinicians, able to provide services to police officers and are trained in trauma response and crisis...crisis...it's not crisis, de-escalation, it is...
Critical incident.
Critical incident, thank you. Critical incident response training. And so, they are now delivering services to our police officers in Swamish and Whistler. So, feel very pleased that we're doing that and just really glad to be able to have gotten through some of those processes that give us the ability to access those services locally. And we're well on our way to delivering on this yearly wellness checks that we've talked about, including psychological assessments. And so, that's going to be delivered by the end of our fiscal year, which ends March 31st. Few more things that are happening in this area that I think are important to highlight, including that we have increased our training in the areas of health and wellness. So, avalanche training, crevasse training, we talked about the snowmobile and boat training, but some of the things that might be specific to this area, given that we here in the Sea to Sky corridor are making up 51% of the search and rescue calls for the lower mainland area, we are using this training in a different way than, say, our police officers who come up from Northman or Surrey that would come and work this area or transfer into this area. They're not necessarily coming with those skills, and so we are finding that we're needing more training specific and local that isn't otherwise divisionally offered. And so, using that and getting a little bit more creative in how we deliver that training, making sure our police officers are equipped to attend these calls for service. Work on building a significant detachment training plan. This is through the work that Sasha's doing in her op support role, so just honing into what we currently have, refining how we do this and how we deliver this and roll it out to make sure that it's meaningful. We...I ended up just picking some highlights throughout this presentation to share with you as I talked about these pillars, and so just recapping here on some of the things that we talked about with the multi-jurisdictional property crime offenders, trafficking charges, weapon seizures, gondola investigation. You'll see that we hit these things throughout the presentation. And again, investing in our people. And just a bit to pull up on this last piece, which is that we've had quite a few interesting calls here in Swamish. One was a suicidal male on the top of the Swamish chief, which we've brought in our emergency response team from the lower mainland to attend. We've had some interesting mental health and search and rescue calls that have been and brought us out, highlighting again this training that we feel is really important for our police officers as we start to see some of our files change in this regard. I'm going to dig in a little bit right now into our stats here in a few minutes, and you'll see how some of these files are jumping out at us now in a more consistent basis. And also, we're seeing a rise in these calls for service, so a bit of a shift as we start to see the demographics and the visitor population change for Swamish.
So, I just...
Please, yeah?
Yeah. Just doing a time check, we started out 10 minutes late, so we've got about 10 minutes left, if that's...
I have about...I've got about five more minutes of statistics to recap, and I can leave about five more minutes for questions if that works for you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, media, just a reminder that you can follow us on Twitter. We're actively posting on Twitter. We have 1.3 million impressions for 2019. This is an area that people are going to access information that can link directly back to our media releases, and these media releases are posted on our Swamish RCMP website. So, if you guys are ever looking for information or want to refer people to accurate media sources for police files, you can find that there. We're laughing a little bit at this coming in 2021 with the Instagram, in that the BCRCP have launched Instagram. I am told by anybody under the age of 30 and my colleagues that I should be doing lip-syncing videos on TikTok as opposed to going into Instagram here, but you won't see that coming from me anytime soon. Over the last 20 years, you know, we started with, we only had landlines here in policing, and I'm not that old. So, this change has changed a lot of...how we police, but also how we tell our stories. So, we're working to move with this, but with everything in national strategies and when it has to deal with police and public safety as well as people's freedoms, we really try and be mindful about not making progressions too quickly that could have lasting impacts on people, increasing marginalization or any sort of issues there. So, we really want to be mindful of how we move forward with these types of stories that we tell. So, I'm just going to quickly highlight our statistics here. A really important factor as we look into our statistics is that in 2019, there was a national change on how statistics are scored. A lot of you have heard this information already before, but I am recapping it because this is very important, that we look at the statistics from this year, isolated and separated from 2018, and we don't compare them year to year. The change is that we no longer...we no longer look at whether or not a reported incident had credible evidence...sorry, we no longer look at a reported incident as it may have occurred. We believe that it occurred unless otherwise proven that it did not occur, meaning that we believe victims when they come forward or callers when they come forward and say, "This has happened." Unless there's something that's really not sounding right and we dig into it and we find credible evidence to believe it didn't happen, we're going to score that as happening. That has changed our...how we score assaults, sexual assaults, uttering threat files. There is an emphasis on believing people who come forward to the police, and this is an important change. It was needed, but it is...it has changed our statistics and how we go forward year to year here. So, I ask you to be mindful as we look at the red here, what I'm asking you to look at is year to year, just to kind of get a baseline of where we're at. So, you'll see sexual offenses, 40 to 46. We don't know that that's an increase until we drill down individually into each one of these incidents, but what we can tell you is that there's 46 reported offenses this year. An important factor to take note and why we continue to invest in our domestic violence, sexual assault position, as well as when we look at our sexual assault files, or...sorry, we have 43 domestic violence files this year and we've had 46 sexual offenses. We can look at that year to year as just a frame of reference, but it's important to know that these are scored differently, and that is a national change, and you will see this in every community as they look at the statistics this year. In fact, our analysts have told us, you need to look at pre-2018 as...or sorry, pre-2019 as completely different set of data and not as a year-to-year data. I did include the five-year average on the right because I think that's important to spur contextual knowledge here. When I look at property crime here, this is less likely to have been affected by our stats change, and I'm not surprised to see this change. We're seeing property crime up this year across the board, but you'll note that we remain under our five-year average. So, in every single category, we remain under our five-year average, but we are up from 2018 to 2019. In 2018, we ran a lot of great projects. I reported on those successes. You guys have heard about the great work we were doing with unallocated time. We dove into that. This year, our serious crimes team has been focused on a significant child abuse case, child pornography case, prolific sexual assault, and the gondola file that we talked about that really took our seven-person GIS team and fully tasked them. So, the work on our prolific offenders and our property crime offenders didn't get done in the same way when they were tasked with those other files, and you can see what happens while it's not a significant shift, there is...or sorry, while it's not a significant shift compared to our five-year average, it is a significant shift year over year, 18 to 19. So, we are seeing trends that change that. You'll note that we feel like there is going to be a good ability to deploy right now for the next few months as we see it right now. I had a meeting with our Plainclothes Commander yesterday, and there's a couple of projects on the go that actually started in December. We're seeing the fruits of those, including a significant fentanyl seizure last week that's involving a replica firearm as well and a person who was put in jail for that seizure of the fentanyl, some other drugs, and a replica firearm last week. It's leading into what I believe to be some great property crime work and drug work coming up, but here's some kind of alarming stats when I look at the last six months, although not fully given what I know about the work they were doing. We talked a little bit about missing persons going up. I'm really cutting some of the time here, so I'm just going to speed up through the last two slides here, but missing persons is up, 2019, 96. This one will not be affected by statistical changes. So, 96 versus 80 the year before, 89 over the five-year average. I'm really pleased to see the decrease in mental health calls for service. I attribute a lot of this to the great work that's being done by police officers in connecting with our partners who are also invested in the mental health and social chronic offenders. It's something that I think we can keep a focus on and in terms of being able to reduce mental health calls for service, that hopefully is connecting people with our mental health clinicians in the community and the outreach programming that is available in our community. You'll remember that both of those are connected to the provincial policing standards and the changes and the court decisions that have improved the way we respond to those kind of calls for service, but also increase the amount of time that we spend on those. And I think something that I left as a point of confusion here last time when I talked about missing persons and provincial policing standards, court decisions and changes, is that this is being downloaded to you from the province, and I think it's important to remember that this is being downloaded to you from the courts, and the changes in policing really change how we police across Canada. They make sure that the charter is upheld, they make sure that police services are delivered in a really meaningful way in our communities, but here in the municipality, we're still responsible for those changes and making sure that we do an excellent job policing those changes. So, great to see our improvement in the impaired stats. We talked about this. This is correlated with a decrease in collisions, and history has shown us that without focusing on impaired driving, we will see some deadly consequences if not, and so really pleased to see that 88%, the 158 charges for impaired driving is not affected by the stats changes. That's a great result from our police officers that were employed to make sure that they were doing those proactive checks, particularly after bar close and at times when we know that there are likely to be impaired drivers on the road. Not a significant change in year-to-year calls for service or priority-one calls, just a slight change there, 1% to 3%, but nothing that we bat an eye at, so those are relatively the same. And one more dig into this admin and operational support, which I reported on about this time last year. So, we are seeing police information checks up significantly. That can be correlated likely to the ride-hailing programs that we're seeing that all require mandatory police information check. Transcription hours are down, although I do anticipate as some of these more significant files get to court, those will start to pick up again this year. So, changes based on how many charges are before the courts and disclosure requests made relatively similar with...or sorry, disclosure requests are down to 312, again, correlated with the number of charges before the courts. the courts. And so we have some lofty goals for 2020. I'm just going to blast through to this one and give you some time for questions. But we are focusing on a sea-to-sky communication strategy that's going to be a little bit more robust and profile, or sharing more of the information, more of the work we're doing on a day-to-day basis, being able to get our story out there on what we're doing. A little bit more work onto our seasonal policing plans, re-envisioning what this growth of our SOIP team will look like, including potentially a mental health and missing persons unit, although the recap of our 2019 stats, I'm going to need to dig into that with our analyst and look a little bit more clearly at what it is that's driving those calls versus the decrease that we saw this year. So we saw those steadily climbing, and now we saw a decrease this year. So we'll take a little look into that and potentially can shift that resource and that plan a little bit more there. Continue to focus on prolific offenders and social chronic program. We talked about property crime through our crime reduction unit, addressing that as a sea-to-sky strategy. And lastly, a focus on our analytics. I really would like to look at an investment in our technology and forward thinking how we can use a civilian member, not a municipal employee, but a civilian member, which is a police officer, sorry, a public service employee who is trained to do analytical work, separate than a municipal employee, but actually looking at analytics and how we deploy our police services. So I'm doing some internal work on that, on what I could do to bring that to our community. Questions? Counsel.
Counsel, ready?
Take a listen, Mike. Just curious about the boat.
Yeah?
Is it stationed here full-time? I understand this is trailer boat, because you go to lakes as well as saltwater, it's a little bit in between. Is it stationed here full-time, part-time, does it show up for special events, or?
It's a great question. So the boat that we have is scheduled for replacement. It should be replaced this year. That's a provincial cost to replace that. That's a provincial boat that we were able to get to be able to deploy onto things like our lakes up in Pemberton area, Whistler, and then down here on the ocean. Again, provincial asset, so one that we got assigned to us at the time and scheduled for replacement this year. It's not going to be a boat that will be more, the one that's replacing it is not going to be one that'll be moored in the water year round. It'll still be one that's pulled out and winterized over the winter and again, used only in the summer. So not ocean-going, because I know you're very familiar with the difference between ocean-going boat and a lake boat and the uses of those two. It won't be one that's moored year round.
Located in this area?
Right now, it's currently located in Squamish. We have it in the compound in Squamish, but we move it around. We've had it on Bowen Island. We've had it on Pemberton based on events that we have planning or scheduled patrols, things that we're planning on doing for the.
But within the sea-to-sky as opposed to sharing it with Surrey or something like
Oh, yeah, 100% a sea-to-sky asset.
Here, Ali.
Thank you. I'm curious about the idea of sort of seasonal policing. And given that we have so many visitors coming, especially in vans, and the detachment was sort of part of the collaboration, is there more planned this summer around how we do more policing around tourists? I know that's a big push often in Whistler.
Yes.
That is basically who lives there in the high season. But what about for here? What would you see in terms of the improvements we could make in Squamish around our high season?
So last year, we found that bike patrol, you know, was a really interesting one to get into some of that areas that we weren't otherwise getting into. But when we think about our visitor population and the areas that people are camping, I might even a question for Gareth a little bit more, because he's drilled into this a lot more. But I understand this as, what are we thinking for the seasonal policing plan for 2020? And how could we work together on this? Is that kind of the question, or is that?
Or where can we make improvements or focus resources to make the most out of it? So then our locals and, what we're trying to do is reduce friction between locals and visitors. And so just be curious what you learned from last year and what you think would happen to it.
Yeah, it's more of a, I saw the seasonal policing as more kind of a downtown kind of strategy, not so much like they did to go out to the campgrounds and, because they had access to the e-bikes and, you know, they go fairly quick and can get it brown pretty easy. But I focused most of the attention downtown, providing service to the businesses and customers coming downtown, dealing with the incidents that were happening downtown, and doing outreach. It was more of an outreach seasonal policing position to connect with helping hands and some of the local issues that were going on downtown. But, you know, and then going out on the, to the boats to deal with some stuff that we, we don't really patrol along the water that often or have never until we got our boat. So we're seeing quite a bit of issues out in house sound, with some boating infractions and safety things, and providing the educational piece there as well. But as far as going to the campgrounds and dealing with some of the folks up at the Squamish Chief, I think, and some of the other campgrounds, is that what you're looking for?
Van dwellers and?
Van dwellers, yeah. So we can provide some pamphlets for outreach. It was more of an outreach position. It's kind of, we coined it as a seasonal policing position, but it was just to get out and interact with the folks that are coming to town.
I think we're really working to grasp to what that population needs, right? So is this a, does it become an environmental issue? Are we dealing with people camping in different ways that we can support bylaws and some of the work that they're doing? Is this a population that, what is, what are the needs of our visitor population? So beyond search and rescue calls, which we seem to be seeing more and more of, what do we need to do to shift our policing and respond to these changes that we're seeing in our community? And, and I, I don't know that I have a firm grasp. I feel like this has even changed in the last five years. And this is something that I, I would be happy to welcome a partnership with anybody that has more information on these needs. But definitely for us, it's about supporting tourism, supporting the businesses in the community that want people to feel safe downtown, that want people to access the community, and that want visitors in the community. I know that that's a priority in terms of investment. So trying to balance that with, with making sure that we have a great downtown strategy, a great response in terms of issues that have been a priority for the District of Squamish, and really grasping what those needs are for policing.
Do any of our crimes that follow seasonal?
I, we don't have an analyst for the District of Squamish, or funded analyst for the District of Squamish. So I rely on some provincial support that I can get from time to time. This is an area that I'm looking at. And I can't, it's hard for me to extrapolate whether or not we're seeing those missing persons files or those disturbances. You know, we saw a rise in disturbances. Is that correlated to summer? Is that correlated to winter? That's an area that I'm looking at creative ways to solve this this year. So if I could get more information from our statistics through analytical review of it, that's, that's something that I'm going to try and get back to you on. I've got some ideas in the works here that would be preliminary for me to share with you. Natasha and I have lots, and Lynda and I have lots of discussions about what this might look like and how I do this. So you can stand by for further updates on that, though.
The whole idea too is to create a matrix around like what, what is that position actually trying to accomplish and capture? And Kyle, who I had in there, did an amazing job of capturing all those, like a matrix of what he was doing on a day-to-day basis. So we can actually like see the value of what that is. I had to take a resource from Strong Watch. You know, sometimes you just gotta pull the Band-Aid off and do it. And so I cut one of the decisions to make that seasonal policing from the watch. So it wasn't overly popular with the watch, but I felt it's important for Squamish to kind of have that, that presence in downtown. Why not try it one more time?
If I could just say something quick on that, because I did quite a bit of work on that seasonal policing project, is that I think it's multi-layered, right? We have a sort of a within boundaries District of Squamish seasonal policing plan, because when you look at it, the majority of our community don't participate their world in cars, they're in bikes, they're on their ATVs, they're climbing, they're hiking, they're doing all sorts of things. And our police officers need to start looking and acting like our community does. And that was part of the seasonal policing project, was that we needed to start it small to get our successes and to get our projects, and then it gets bigger. So this coming summer, our hope is to at least have two members in that seasonal policing for the District of Squamish. And then my goal next month, I'll be meeting with Department of Natural Resources, Department of Fisheries, Conservation, and we're all coming up with a collaborative plan. There's provincial funds that we can use to access the Squamish Valley that actually tends to be a hotspot for us during the summer. And there are residents of Squamish that are going out there, and these are highways that are being accessed within the community for people to get out there. We saw quite a bit of incidents out at the Chief Island. So that's an area that we're focusing on. We had obviously, within the seasonal policing, we have patrols over the weekend. They hit the BC parks. So they're going to Cat Lake, to Brom Lake, to Shannon Falls, to the Chief. So all those provincial areas. So it's a bit multi-layered, but it is designed to best support the Squamish community and surrounding area. Whistler will have its own seasonal policing objectives that will be supporting what they're seeing up there. This is where we talk about the strap plan being tailor-made for the communities that we're in.
Thank you.
Counsel, short?
Yeah, I noticed in the statistics that there is a, almost a double increase in possession of cocaine and drug trafficking. And I'm curious if that, obviously, we're in the middle of a fentanyl crisis, and there's probably some resources that have been allocated to that sort of file, or is that actually an increase in drug-making?
It's been, I think, the successes of our, our sea-to-sky crime reduction units. We put together a targeted policing plan that allowed, that pulled in resources from Pemberton, Whistler, Squamish, and we put them all onto intelligence that we've got coming in that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to react to, because let's say our serious crimes file, our serious crimes team was dealing with the gondola or another serious incident, they couldn't deploy to the project work on the weekends. We pulled together resources from all of our communities to work together and focus on intel that we had coming in that say would be, you know, that there's a seizure that's, or sorry, there's a drug trafficker in town or that has returned from jail, something like this. And so we were able to deploy our resources, do the work, intelligence on policing, and then be able to make those seizures. And we saw quite a bit of successes from that crime reduction mission.
Yep.
Just on the search and rescue piece, I know in the past year, there's been some incidences where there's been some mental health issues, or scenes of maybe getting a weapon or something like that. So in those, I understand police involvement. But is it typical that you need to go on every search and rescue call? Or is this sort of a lack of resourcing and a volunteer search and rescue?
So if a call comes in as a missing person, it's the police who run that file, and search and rescue volunteers are assisting us through, EMBC search and rescue can be deployed by police officers. But because they're a volunteer program, they have a search and rescue coordinator that we'll, we'll work very closely with. But the police are responsible for running that call and managing that. As you know, those can turn into different angles. A lot of the calls that we get here are search and rescue accidental, either death or injury or lost person within the area. But in another community, let's go with another remote community where you have a missing person, you deploy your search and rescue call, you're going to have police monitoring that, because that missing person doesn't necessarily correlate with just an accidental death in the community. Most of ours are just people accessing this area for tourism and sport. But police are still charged with running that call as the paid resource, trained resource investigative capacity for the missing person to monitor it. And so we are on that call from start to finish, managing the volunteers. And of course, here, they've got such excellent search and rescue volunteers that it does limit some of the work we have to do, but we do need to have local police officers deployed to that at all times. Whereas if you could think of that being a different kind of a call where you've got a missing person, but it's not necessarily related to an accidental death, or like, you know, we think back to the high-profile one of us, a biker in the backcountry, and we're trying to bring that person out. We might have one that's a missing person that we're bringing search and rescue in for, but there's more investigative components to that. We're going to have a large team of police officers involved running that file. So again, yeah, EMBC is the one that manages the volunteers, but we would run the missing person. If it's an injury in the backcountry that can be run purely by ambulance or BC ambulance, they won't typically do anything beyond the end of our road. And so there, although they are, they are able to manage calls all over BC, often that gets downloaded to the police when it gets to a, let's say, a before-service road and into an area that's more remote.
Counsel, any further questions? Nope. All right.
Thank you very, very much for everything you did for the project.
Absolutely.
So next up, we have. I think we're taking a file break. So I guess. Welcome back, everyone. I'll turn it over now to Ms. Guest and Sticker for the draft Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Devon Guest, and I'm the Acting Director of Recreation Services. And I'm joined with Ms. Sarah Dicker, who is the Acting Manager of Arts and Culture. And we, as staff, are excited today to present to you the community's draft Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy, which will in turn create a baseline of social investment to measure against in the years to come. This strategy is a springboard and has been used to gather community and to organize it in a way that has not been undertaken to date by the district or self-organized. And much like our friends from Bowen Island, we are not planning the arts, we are planning for the arts. And we really like the direction of that quote.
So today, we're going to walk through the strategy creation process, the community engagement, the stakeholder engagement, as well as covering the guiding principles and values of the strategy, the vision and mission, objectives, and strategies and actions, following the recommendations of Counsel.
The, the questions that you see up there will not be new. They were, they are the questions that we have, that we engaged this process in and that Counsel endorsed in May. And by using these questions, they provided us a lens for which staff analyzed the deep stakeholder feedback.
So the strategy process began in April to May 2019 and encompassed a discovery and research phase. We then launched a community engagement phase, which encompassed a community survey as well as stakeholder engagement. Following that, we entered strategy development. And today, we're presenting to you the draft version of the strategy. We hope to gather your feedback today, as well as bring this to the community for final feedback through an open house, having copies available at Municipal Hall, the library, Brennan Park, and the Arts and Culture Office. We'll also be taking feedback through email via arts@squamish.ca. Staff hope to begin actioning this strategy by following adoption by Counsel in February. The community survey was the first phase of the community engagement for this strategy. Results were shared with Counsel at the October 27 Committee of the Home. We saw a fantastic level of response from the community, and we want to extend our thanks to stakeholders for sharing and assisting with the process. We then entered the phase of stakeholder engagement. This step involved working and listening with sector stakeholders and conducting 21 stakeholder interviews with Arts, Culture, and Heritage groups. The results of the survey were shared and feedback was gathered regarding the survey results, as well as conversations with stakeholders regarding their aspirations and barriers they currently face. Using the information gathered with the interview, at the interviews, along with community survey results, a vision, mission, and objectives were formed and endorsed at workshops with stakeholders. Stakeholders also worked in groups to prioritize strategies and actions, which helped to form and develop a draft strategy, which we see today.
You can't, staff feel that you can't have an Arts, Culture, and Heritage strategy in a community without representing the principles and values of that community, especially in a strategy that we know is so personal to our stakeholders. And so these were our guiding principles and values. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that Squamish Nation is listed and that the, that we also know that that relationship is built off of relationships first, and that driving particular agendas to fit into our timelines was not necessarily successful. And so I'd like to acknowledge as staff that we will be holding space for our friends and colleagues at the nation when we, when we register on their priority list. when we, when we register on their priority list.
So the strategy components include vision, mission, objectives, strategies, and actions. The vision and missions, the vision, mission, and objectives were created with the community in order to establish the solid foundation for which the strategies and actions are aligned that would help to guide the arts, culture, and heritage sector over approximately the next five years. After analyzing the stakeholder feedback along with the community, the community survey results, three distinct categories emerged, which formed our strategy objectives. Cultivate Vitality. Expand cultural capacity that supports and nurtures a vibrant creative sector in Swamish. Nourish Connectivity. Elevate awareness and create connectivity. Optimize Space. Enhance affordability, sorry, enhance availability, affordability, and accessibility of space and activate existing spaces to build a more eventful community. As we move into the next slides, you'll note that the strategies we are about to discuss all contribute to the three objectives. The bars below each strategy in the coming slides indicate the level of contribution within each objective. Cultivate Vitality is represented in yellow. Nourish Connectivity is represented in red. And Optimize Space is represented in teal. Strategy one. Use municipal levers to create a demandful municipality. The term "eventfulness" was coined by the city of Edinburgh in the early 2000s and has become one of the key indicators of the health and vitality of a community. Stakeholders shared that they want opportunities to easily connect with the community through events and experiences. They want numerous kinds of events of different scales and moods. And they want to know what's happening where as well as provide events that are easily accessible. The district identified a number of municipal levers towards these objectives, from policy changes to optimization of resources. Action A for this strategy is special events policy amendment. The special events will be broken down into three categories of experiences: major planned events, community events, and neighborhood events. Strategy, sorry, action B for this strategy is programming and activities in municipal space. The district owns and operates several common spaces or lobby areas, which are opportunities for activation for the purposes of arts and heritage experiences. These spaces include Brennan Park, the 55 Activity Center, and Municipal Hall. Low-barrier experiences such as displays, jam space, and maker drop-ins enable spontaneous and accessible experiences for the community to enhance cultural connections. Strategy two. Establishment of a Culture and Recreation Services Department. Community desire to enhance accessible arts programming provides an opportunity to formally integrate arts and culture into recreation services infrastructure. Recreation services, following the recommendations of the Youth Strategy and Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan, will transition into a neighborhood hub model. This shift aims to increase accessibility and smooth demand across facilities. The Arts and Culture Department shares these objectives and additionally needs to enhance program availability and additional, without additional resources or infrastructure assets. The actions for this strategy include operationalize a neighborhood hub model. Feedback from the community included a desire for more accessible arts programming, including funding, oh, sorry, including workshops and classes. Similar feedback was received from the youth regarding arts programming targeted towards young people. District staff are simultaneously working with municipal, to optimize municipal facilities and looking to establish partnerships with other facilities to create options in each neighborhood. Establish Swamish, Establish Swamish Nation Programming Led by District Leaders. Part of reconciliation is enhancing our knowledge, understanding, and appreciation of the indigenous cultural practices and heritage of the territory that we live on. To support our community's journey of reconciliation, the district will work with the Swamish Nation in order to integrate cultural and creative programming offerings led by Swamish Nation cultural leaders. Arts programming enhanced and recreation programming, including significant focus on youth. The Swamish Arts Council will move its administrative space into the 55 Activity Center. The Swamish Arts Council has already established, is already established as a key provider of youth arts programming in Swamish. This location change will allow for administrative efficiency into recreation infrastructure. Our third strategy is enhance the Swamish Arts Council partnership agreement. Actions, sorry, recognizing the Swamish Arts Council has expertise and community connect, and community connections in providing arts-related services and that the Swamish Arts Council could benefit from funding certainty in order to leverage additional grant funding from other levels of government, which will enhance the arts services to the community. The district will enhance the existing partnership agreement. The Arts Council will move to administer and oversee public art, public art projects. The mandate of the Public Art Committee was met in December 2019 and will be transferred to the Swamish Arts Council, who has expertise and connections in running and administering granting programs and competitions. Programming and activities in municipal space. The district will formally transition a portion of the community enhancement grant funding to the Swamish Arts Council to continue to administer a grant programming for the provision of arts and cultural programs in our community. Additional deliverables of the partnership will include a specified value of public art funding administered, a specified number of arts and culture experiences granted, and multi-generational programming delivered through cultural and recreation services.
I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge our partners from the Swamish Arts Council in attendance today and recognize and share in the recognition that they recognize that heritage, the role that heritage plans in influencing art and that they remain committed to supporting the heritage agenda through the Arts Council mandate.
Our final strategy is to enable the promotion and preservation of social and natural heritage. The district recognizes the roles based, sorry, the role values-based heritage plays in the community and will support the promotion of recognized social, economic, and environmental heritage values our community holds. The actions for this strategy include Cedar Sky Forestry Center Society land. The district and the Cedar Sky Forestry Center Society entered into a 30-year lease on a parcel of land adjacent to the adventure center. This land represents a strong opportunity to establish a foothold for heritage at the gateway of our community and within a key tourism hub. The building of a forestry center, which could encompass exhibit and archival functions and both heritage and environmental educational programming, will provide an important community resource. The district is in support of collaborative, of a collaborative effort between heritage groups in order to advance this opportunity. Expand community capacity through funding opportunities. The district will empower recognized heritage groups in Swamish through endorsement and policy by supporting grant applications to other levels of government to further expand the resources of those heritage groups. Celebrate social heritage through public spaces. Staff will work to utilize funding for public space animation to celebrate social heritage through space activation where appropriate. The Swamish Arts Council will liaise with heritage groups to enhance and celebrate social heritage through public art pieces around the community. And the district will work to provide opportunities to the community's heritage keepers to display, educate, and celebrate Swamish's history.
Strategy out of glance. What you will see is a logic model that shows really the interconnectedness of the actions and strategies laid out on the page. As a thank you, although all organizations may not have committed to the stakeholder engagement process, staff are confident that the cross-section of groups provided fair representation for each category. It has been an exciting opportunity for staff to have participated in this process with the culture makers of our community. The outcomes of this strategy are personal to our community and our stakeholders in a way that maybe other strategies do not resonate. And we'd like to thank our stakeholders and partners for sharing their voices.
So it looks like we have a recommendation in front of us. But before we go to that, maybe I'll entertain a round of questions from Counsel, if there are. Counsel Reese?
Thank you. I was wondering, thank you for the report. And, and just, I guess if I wanted to try to generalize it, to me, this talks about programming as opposed to hard assets. And so I'm wondering, because we've had these discussions with the Arts Council, for example, over the years, the present building is nearing its end. And what are they looking for? And are there certain goals? And so, and, and we've had discussions with other groups in the sort of the same vein. Are we looking for one central building? Are we looking for satellite operations for different things? Is there any kind of insight to that so we can start planning for some of these space requirements that might come up for whatever role the district might have?
Go ahead.
Chair, thanks for the question. I, this is certainly an issue that we're encountering in many areas of our work, as we know through the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan, that we don't have space or capital for anybody really to have their own space. And so being increasingly creative and having mixed-use spaces and being able to achieve our community priority objectives within the constraints of our, our Real Estate Facilities Master Plan is the frame here. The Arts and Culture and Heritage Strategy certainly does focus more on programming because that's what we can do within the existing resources available. We're making it work. There is some indication in the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan that there are needs. Certainly, the Arts Council, for example, has expressed interest in theater for a long time and has really heard that strongly from the arts community that they need that. That was not included in the scope of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy because it's not something that we can do within the resources we have available.
Counsel Shawn?
So building off that a little bit, and I appreciate the context piece there and kind of the, maybe the locus of control. But I guess my question is, kind of, what was the scope for, for timeline for plan implementation that was set in, in this whole process? And a prioritization of the actions that have come out of that? From the perspective of, this does feel like a, a kind of like a, to me, a medium-term plan. Like, these are the things that we know that we can do now as opposed to that broader vision, perhaps, of what it is that we actually need to support a fulsome arts and culture and heritage community? And so I'm just curious about how those two pieces interact.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I think Counsel has maybe heard me say before that within the, within kind of comparisons of maybe our neighbors or, or other communities of a similar size, we would be classified as maybe an emerging artist as opposed to a mature or established one. And that this is a right-fit strategy at the right time. And staff anticipate this to be within a three-to-five benchmark before we start to build upon the good work that this foundation hopes to establish through bringing community together a little bit more and formalize a little bit more.
Mary Ellen?
A couple of questions. What does values-based heritage mean?
Great question. I, staff themselves are on a journey in terms of understanding heritage. And we have used, at the beginning of the strategy, we have used the term "social heritage." And that...
I can define that too.
Okay. So, social heritage is the ideas and the history as opposed to what we, that may come out of a more traditional bricks-and-mortar-style lens of heritage in terms of heritage buildings or heritage artifacts. And so through our workshop put on by the Swamish Historical Society and put on by Heritage B C, the evolution of the term "values-based heritage" came to really represent the pivot in which the heritage industry is, is undertaking to move from a specific bricks-and-mortar-style inventory to a more values, well, values-based approach in, in terms of determining the assets and the historical assets to the community. Did I get there?
Not quite. So we probably need a glossary of terms in this strategy so that our community understands what those terms mean.
Yeah.
Because I think unless you're sort of immersed in, in the lingo, those terms are pretty esoteric and meaningless.
Thank you.
The, I think there's references in here to, in the action plan, under "use municipal levers to create an eventful municipality." And it talks about our community enhancement grant program. Counsel passed a motion at the end of doing community enhancement grants that we weren't going to do them the same way anymore. So we need to make that language a little bit more clear about how we'll deal. Needs to be more vague in the interim, and so we work that out. Because we're not going to do it the same way going forward. I had a question on page nine of your strategy. It lists a whole bunch of events. And then it says, "Community events will be led by district events coordinator." And this is after like National Indigenous, People's Day, the Seek Festival, Canada Day, Santa Claus parade. So I was really confused by the next line that said, "will be led by district events coordinator." Because we don't do that now.
Yeah, through the chair. This is the change that we are recommending through the strategy is that those four events become the responsibility of the municipality to put on rather than this being through the B I A. the BIA. And that that's funded through a sponsorship-type model. So this, that obviously needs to be made more clear, but that's the change that is being recommended.
Well, I think for me, like, what's the business case? And how much does that cost? Like, that has significant implications to our budget. When we looked at the cost that we were asked for just to host Canada Day, it was in the tens of thousands of dollars. Then you need a staff person to be able to do that. So I'm not necessarily supportive of that direction, and that would be a budget decision. So I don't know how other councils feel, but I really stumbled over that one. I think that events need to be with the responsibility of the whole community, not just us. So I'll be interested to hear where my colleagues sit on that. So.
Can I clarify that the, in the process of implementation, developing a sponsorship policy that would be a cost-recovery model for the costs incurred with the business community, the downtown business community, would be the approach that we would take? So there's a lot of work to be done to figure out what that would look like. The principle that we look forward to council's discussion around is that this is something that, those four community events are things that we, as the district, value to animate our public space and that we can work with the community to fund this and be coordinated by the district. So that's the intention. We need to work out the business case, to your point. But I look forward to council conversation around the values.
I guess for me is that if we take on all the ownership for these events, and over time, because of budget crunches and changes in council, like, attachment to those kinds of events, those are the first things that get cut. And now there's no one in the community that has been holding them, supporting them. It basically lets the community just wash their hands of them. And so then you look at our budget and what we've got to take care of over the coming years, and I think, well, the sponsorship model hasn't quite worked yet when community groups are doing it. So why would it work for us? And then when we have to cut something, those are the first things that get cut. And who picks them up? And so I think there's a relationship there that we actually don't want to break. So I have more questions, but I'll leave it there for now.
Council Anderson?
Yes, and I'm going to purposely direct myself to my council colleagues in my initial comments and not have reflected my, these comments towards staff.
Just questions still?
It is a que, well, no, it's not a question. I'm sorry. I'll have to wait for that then.
Okay.
I do have a number of questions. If you'd like me to start.
Yeah, why don't we have a question?
All right. The municipal space that's referred to. Our waterfront walkway has been the focus of several projects, not only in public art, but in heritage kiosks, commemorations, storytelling, all under planning and have been for years. That is an example of a space that I'm curious about how you may define it in relation to municipal space. Another example is the Adventure Center. Its ownership and administration or under discussion have been for some time. We've had some heritage displays there that were put in place by former employee Ms. Follinsby a decade ago, and they're still there on the wall. And maybe there's opportunities there at the Adventure Center. So these two examples, could you discuss them in relation to municipal space as you discussed municipal space in the report?
Through chair, those would, we agree that those are community, potentially community asset inventories available for activation and eventfulness.
Sorry, through the chair. As part of the implementation of this, the work will be to create the inventory, figure out where the slick winds are. Certainly, the kind of opportunities that might be easiest to implement would be, for example, a municipal hall lobby. But there are other sites certainly of community significance that there are opportunities to activate and work with our partners, in particular, to bring some value to it. Thanks.
In follow-up, then, just, I'll just focus on the waterfront. Here we have private developer projects and CAC contributions. And we have highlighted in your report, or you have new policy directions on how to administer those programs, public art programs, and heritage together, which I've been supportive. I'm just wondering whether we have that covered. Is that addressed? How we're going to, together with our private developer partners, plan for what we do on this waterfront trail? Is that addressed in how we plan to go ahead with administration of public art as we sell that over the whole?
I think as we move forward, crafting a governance structure and in terms of reference for the new public art committee or the new public art sphere, that would be fleshed out. Right now, public art, to the best of my knowledge, is not listed on our community amenity contribution policy. And so therefore, the rewrite of the public art policy would address and acknowledge the informal process that planning and public art have participated in with the developers over the last year and a half to two years.
That's helpful. Just as a little bit of background, we recently asked, is that, in my experience, developers are confused and do receive conflicting signals. Or what are we going to do? Are we obliged to put a, for example, a personation's local carving here? Or what is the theme here? There is confusion. And if we look elsewhere, there's really successful examples of a comprehensive plan that everybody's applying into. We're not there yet, but I take your remarks as positive towards that. That's where we're headed.
So I have a couple of questions, and I'll go to Council Rice and Council Stoner. The theater is mentioned several times in the public feedback. Can you just clarify? Because there's been a lot of community discussion about a movie theater, but then we also have between shifts and public performance theater. So in the engagement, were people clear about what sort of theater they're referring to in, and when we say theater, which one do we mean?
Through you, chair. The general bias that staff adopted was that they were referring to, like, a community theater or a, and not a commercial movie theater when receiving feedback. This, through our one-on-one stakeholder engagements and through the workshops, it was important and to document the community's aspirations. However, it was also important to acknowledge that it was, the feasibility of these types of aspirational conversations were, for the meantime, outside of the scope.
Just in reference to some of the mayor's questions, I've heard the BIA express that they felt they were doing Canada Day, fulfilling a need, but it wasn't necessarily their core business. I haven't heard that same sentiment for some of the other festivals. So are the other groups actually, have they been saying to us, "We would like someone else to take these on," or is it just the BIA that we're stuck with?
I, it is primarily the BIA. The recommendation was developed in the context of a suite of feedback that people want to be enabled to hold small neighborhood-level events like block parties and this kind of thing, and that we want to support that in the way that best optimizes our resources. And that the big, major planned events category should have a different funding model. These kinds of events are in a category together because they're of the same scale and intention, not necessarily because the feedback has come from all of the organizers of the events.
Could there be a follow-up?
Well, just on that?
Yes.
But we give $10,000 to the community foundation. The community foundation matches that with $10,000, and that's where the neighborhood community grants come from for neighborhood events. So why would we move into this category? It's being the?
The middle category, you mean?
Neighborhood. You just said the neighborhood-level event.
So the neighborhood, that's not the Canada Day Seek Festival. That's the sort of small-level block party.
Yeah.
And so those are, to be, continue to be self-organized by community groups. That's not in the category of what we would take on ownership for organizing from the district perspective.
Council, Council Rice?
Thank you. I'm back onto the hard assets thing. Because I think it might be helpful. I take the point that we don't have resources for a lot of these things today. I don't debate that. But we might one day. And for me at least, it's helpful if we have kind of a wish list. If we sort of knew where the arts community and culture community wanted to go, the stakeholders wanted to go to, if they had, I don't want to say unlimited funds, but if there were resources, what, how do you see sort of the arts unfolding in terms of hard assets? Because sometimes you do get these opportunities. Sometimes it's through development. Sometimes a grant program comes along. And if we kind of have a, sort of a vision for the kind of things we want, do we want one big one or a whole bunch of little ones, for example? Do we want them around the parks? Just, there's a number of different opportunities or possibilities, I guess. So for me, it would be helpful if the community, the arts community had sort of a, you know, the stakeholders had sort of a consensus about what they would generally like to see. And then, as a council, we, as I say, every now and then, an opportunity comes up, and we can't predict it today. But then we know, yep, we've got that on our list, and now we can take advantage of this. So I think that would be a helpful thing to have, this sort of a blue-sky vision, I guess, whatever you want to call it.
Thank you.
Council Stoner?
Yeah, I want to turn to Action 2B, so on your Strategy 2, which is establishing Squamish programming led by Squamish cultural leaders. And I fully support this in principle, but I'm a little bit hesitant around the language that's used. Specifically, it speaks about integrating their programming into ours, and I just think that that maybe is not the correct framing that we're aiming for. And so I wanted to put out there a suggestion of, rather looking to explore and pursue partnership opportunities to support and increase access to Squamish Nation cultural, Squamish Nation cultural and creative programs through shared programming, space, and event promotion. Because I think a lot of things are happening, also just at Tumal Hall, or are led by the Squamish nations, that really is just, perhaps needs a little bit more awareness amongst our community that their events are happening and that they can participate. This, the Squamish Palau is one example, Multicultural Day at Squamish, the Tumal Hall this coming weekend is another. And so I think that, I appreciate the sentiment of hoping to integrate some of their learnings and teachings into our programming. Broadening that portion of the strategy could see a few additional opportunities come forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're sort of moving into comments, too.
Yeah, that was not a question.
So I, did you want us to respond, Mayor Elliot?
You have a question?
Okay.
Not too long.
Oh, did you have a question, or?
Yes.
All right, Council Anderson and Mayor Elliot.
Yes, there's been some attention to, in the report, to the Foresty Center Society lease. Of course, that's municipal property. However, the other lease that is of interest in this picture is the West Coast Railway Association, which is at the Rosewood Roadway Park. Are they not comparable in the kind of aims that you spell out for them in the report as assets that involve municipal partnerships? Again, missing something as regards land ownership or something. But it seems to me that that does deserve to be mentioned. And certainly, over the years, the district of Squamish has been very supportive as a partner to that institution in various ways, and for the aims of the strategy.
Agreed. Thank you for your comment.
May I also point out that there, the, what Foresty Center Society, of course, there's future conversations to be had with that society, but from my own experience, it has also always incorporated public art and opportunity showcase art. That's true for any museum and exhibit facility, interpretive center today. So really, we can add that aspect to the future concept. It's always been there.
Mayor Elliot?
So under the key principles, the last one is, local government's role is to identify areas and opportunities to support a thriving eventful creativity. But I would like to challenge that because local government's role is to make sure that people have clean water and their toilets flush, and that there's parks and roads. But actually, this is optional, and it's not a requirement of local government. Now fortunately, our community cares a lot about this stuff, and so it's something that we have turned our attention to. But I think the wording there, and this is where this strategy will work, if everyone's really clear on their roles and responsibilities. And so I think it should read, local government's role is to work with the community to identify areas and opportunities. So we're at the table, we can convene conversations, we can use that power to make things happen. But I don't think it's our role to identify those opportunities. Sometimes it will be, because things will come across your desk and you'll be like, wow. But once we see those opportunities, we're going to go to the community and say, hey, we just came across this great opportunity. And so I want to keep this idea that we are not trying to own more and more of arts, culture, and heritage. We are trying to share more and more and support more and more and enable. And I think when you look at the models where we provide funding to Sorka, and they now partner with all the trail groups to make sure that funding gets spread around. And then we look at the Arts Council, and they've been able to bring everyone under, in the arts arena, sort of under that umbrella, and do more with the money that we provide. And I think that can also be a model for the heritage groups, of which there are many right now. But if they decided to maybe coalesce, there's more power in that. So anyway, I think our language in here has to be clear that our role is actually to support, to work with, to convene, but not to lead necessarily in everything. I don't, I think things fail when all roads point to the district, because we're slow. And that is not a criticism of anybody in this building, it's just the nature of local government. Our community is much more nimble than we are. I want to go back to that piece around, funding from the community enhancement grant program will be allocated to activate neighborhood events. So the community foundation does this. We need to stay away from this. So I, I think that should be actually taken out. There is a way in which we need to keep working with the foundation to ensure that $10,000 flows to them to match, but because we're changing the community enhancement grant program, I think we just need to be careful of that wording. Oh, this one confused me. The district will formally transition a portion of the community enhancement grant funding to the Squamish Arts Council. This is under 2, 3B. But another recommendation is to then fix up our partnership agreement. So couldn't this fall under that?
That's exactly what it is.
Oh, so maybe just consistent language there?
Yeah.
And take out the community enhancement grant portion? Okay, here's some other wording that I was confused by. The district will empower recognized heritage groups and Squamish through endorsement and policy.
What policy?
What do we mean by endorsement?
Can you go to that section?
That is 4B.
Expand community capacity through funding opportunities. So there are funding opportunities at different levels of government, other than us at the municipal level, that can provide our heritage groups either access to information or additional funding to help them come together, coalesce, or mobilize in a manner that would further their agenda.
But what policy is missing?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing the word where policy is.
Section 4B, it says, "The district will empower recognized heritage groups in Squamish through endorsement and policy by supporting grant applications at other levels of government." I'm just, are we in, one, we don't endorse in group, and two, but we do write letters of support.
Yes.
And then policy, why are we using the word policy there? So I'm asking, what policy is missing? What do we need to do in order to help these groups further expand their resources? Like, is there a specific policy piece missing? Why are we using that word?
I believe at the time that that was meant to acknowledge our community partnership policy and to use the community partnership policy to support recognized groups in our community.
Good. So I think where we, where we can be specific, we should be. Because, like, do you mean OCP policy? Do you, like, which policy?
Thank you.
And then, in C, in that same section, it says, "Staff will work to utilize the funding for public space animation." What, what is the funding for public space animation?
Yeah, through the chair. I think the reorganization of the community enhancement grant to be, community enhancement program to be closer aligned with council's strategic plan is what was intended behind that, that there will be some of that, of those resources allocated towards the activation of public space. There isn't new funding available for that, of course, but realigning towards operationalizing the strategic plan.
It's just, this is not clear to me, whether that's an additional budget ask or whether that's a realignment of resources. And I, I like this strategy, but I also really want us to be clear so that we get off on the right foot with this. And then it says, "The district will provide opportunities to community heritage keepers to display, educate, and celebrate." Again, this is, I think, a place where we want supportive language. So I, I don't think it's us telling the heritage keepers where they should display. I think they want to come to us and say, hey, we want to use Junction Park, or we, now we want to use Brennan Park, or now we want to use, I don't know what. But I think the language should reflect that we'll support efforts to display, educate, rather than taking the lead. Let the community tell us where the best place is to put these things on display. So anywhere that language shifts to our responsibility, I think we want to keep going back to them. And my final question is, where is SD 48 in this whole discussion?
No.
Do they participate?
No, not, not prescriptively in this stakeholder process, but in close alignment with the youth engagement strategy and, and moving to the neighborhood hub model, SD 48 will absolutely play a role in, in rec and culture, expanding their facilities in order to do more, program more, experience more.
Council Anderson?
Yes, there is, in the recommendation, there's reference to a public input opportunity. I wonder if you could describe what that is? If I'm quoting right from your recommendation to us, so I don't have it here in front of me. In February?
So we'll be hosting an open house where the community and stakeholders will be able to come and comment on the draft strategy, as well as having it available across municipal buildings for comment. And we are also inviting comment through our email.
Thank you.
Council Stoner?
Going to Strategy 3A and B, so the Arts Council to administer and oversee the public arts project. I'm just curious, it speaks a little bit to some changes that need to be made in the public art policy. I'm curious if you can speak to a little bit what you foresee. I'm curious if you can speak to a little bit what you foresee them being, in particular, how we make it robust enough to allow a third party to be directing those funds on an ongoing basis. So what do we expect to require from the Arts Council in exchange for being able to allocate those funds?
Right now, we're working with our partners at the Arts Council to craft prescriptive language that would set an expectation of what the public art portfolio would look like in terms of number of competitions, value, and administrative oversight required to, to handle that portion.
So, Counsel, any further comments?
Comments?
Yep.
Is the motion for a move?
If, if people want that, I guess I will entertain a motion. I've, I've heard some requests for some changes, so I'm not sure if we're looking for the motion as given, if we'd like to see another draft of this. Yeah, so...
I'll move the staff if my opinion...
I'll second it.
Okay, so Counselor Stoner moves, Counselor French seconds.
And I'll speak too.
Counselor Stoner moved it.
Yes. Do you want to speak too?
Sure, I'll speak too. I'll start off by saying thanks to staff and to everybody else who is here, present, and those who were not able to make it, who have been part of this multifaceted project. It's taken a lot of time and effort, and I think that especially the statistics that you were able to gather through this process in terms of the amount of stakeholder engagement that has happened to get to this point demonstrates that. And so thanks for the ongoing work in that perspective. I think this starts to get us in the right direction. I will echo what the mayor has said, and I think many of my notes going through it resonate with what she said in terms of where is a little bit of control and really the empowering of our community to be able to lead some of these projects. And it felt like a lot of the components of the strategy were leading back to City Hall. And so just as we go back through in terms of the next iteration of this and looking at the drafts as it is, is really trying to take an eye to that and seeing where can we enable our community and our community partners to, to take ownership and, and be clear about whose roles and responsibilities are to move those pieces forward. It's difficult to do. Earlier today, we had a conversation with the Food Policy Council and the Agricultural Plan, and that was one of the components that they really highlighted through the development of their strategy plan was what does the implementation piece look like and who's responsible for what. And so some of those conversations I can see are in here, in particular with the Squamish Arts Council. But I just encourage you to further those a little bit more as we go through the final iteration of this strategy.
Okay.
Counselor French.
Yeah, thank you. I too want to acknowledge the work that went in to get us to this point. I participated in some of the public engagement. And I felt that it was well organized, well put together, productive, and really produced results and data. And then on top of the work, I also recognize the passion. The people that you brought in as consultants in your own work on this project, it just oozed passion. And I, I think that that is really important for the process that we're in because if this was an initiative that lacked passion, we would probably send you straight back to square one and start over. From the beginning, when I was involved in the, the public participation portion, I felt that heritage was not getting the level of attention that it deserved. And I, I feel that way still with seeing the report that we've got in front of us and the strategy. So if we were being asked to endorse this strategy today, you wouldn't have my support for it. But you've had some great feedback around this table, and I agree with pretty much everything that I've heard in the way of feedback. And if that is taken back and incorporated into some tweaks and some edits, the next time we see this, I'm confident that I'll be able to support.
Counselor Anderson.
Yes, so to my council colleagues, I feel that we have not given adequate directions to staff on two themes, planning of cultural facilities and conservation. I'll speak to each in turn. We have a real estate and facilities master plan released to the public a few months ago, and it outlines, or does refer to neighborhood hubs, operationalizing neighborhood hubs has been referred to this afternoon. It also refers to an archives facility. It doesn't go into further detail, say, on our theater company needs longstanding. In, in other words, that plan is really only making reference and outlining concepts, but I think we need to do further. And there, I do not see in this document even a plan to make a plan. And referring to Counselor Race's comments, a wish list would be helpful, a consensus from the arts and heritage communities, and that's available. But we don't actually have a plan in this plan to gather that. And I think that that is an element that needs to be registered. We need to make a commitment to do further cultural facilities planning. The, the highlights are there. I mean, the people in the audience are well aware of them. We desperately need a community archives. I'm, my house is one of them. And I can tell you. I'll move on to, doesn't bring you joy? I'll, I'll move on to the other theme of, of conservation. And it's quite striking to go through the entire report. And this is again, in my view, it's the signals that we have or have not given from council. It's not there. There is no attention to conservation of heritage in this report. And that I'll come to as brief as I can, outline a few things, but I'd like to point to a, the many aspects I would like to take the time to acknowledge in the report. One of them is the reference to other communities, and I've looked at the Coquitlam Cultural Plan. And I think it's most interesting, I'm looking at a goal three and goal five. Goal five is plan major cultural facility needs, and we don't have that element in our report at all. It's not there. And I would encourage anybody to look into that report and see what the Coquitlam strategy has to say. I think we can go somewhere in that direction to look, do more commitment to make, make a plan. The other thing is heritage. Now, they have three strands under community heritage. One is Aboriginal peoples, we've got that well covered in our commitment. Exhibition interpretation, we're going bending over backwards to find new places and ideas and means to accomplish that. But we're missing conservation. There's nothing here in this report so far about protecting heritage. And that does involve policies, a list of them. We've got a red, a, a policy to create a municipal registry was called for 27 years ago. The idea of a heritage tree bylaw first came to council 23 years ago, and we still don't have it. Green demolition bylaws been discussed recently, records retention bylaw that might give attention to artifacts here in this building, cemetery issues there for the legion that need attention, they're part of this picture. A heritage procedure bylaw or a land development procedures bylaw so the developers can have guidance in how to acknowledge or inventory heritage assets on the property, we don't have that. So these are policies, and heritage community and the arts community cannot write policy. That's our job. So the other thing is, now let's not talk about investments, it is policy. So with respect to the Squamish Nation, I want to complement, not disagree with my colleague, Counselor Stoner, in pointing out that the Squamish Nation community shares our last 150 years of history. They share our built environment, they helped to build it, they lament its loss. And we can read in social media, who's complaining about the chieftain sign and what, what are we going to do with it? The Squamish Nation community. They share our agricultural history, as we've discussed earlier today, they share our forest industry history. And the Squamish Nation story is interwoven throughout whatever the Forestry Center Society is going to do. It's integrated, totally integrated. And the Squamish Nation community members, I've worked with them for years, they describe their need for an archive and exhibit possibilities here in Squamish instead of shipping their artifacts to Whistler. Artifacts are stored in homes and they're not well, you know, they acknowledge, we need solutions. They have family treasures that need storage and secure solutions. They share our interests in these facilities and in facility planning. So I just caution that we can go too far in, in kind of pushing this pre-contact era green walls, really, when on the other hand, we have an integrated and shared interests. I like in the Coquitlam Plan, this cultural resource framework map, and I think that that is something we could consider, it wouldn't take much effort, and it helps us to, where, have we got everybody covered? Have we got our facility ideas and our present facilities covered? And by the way, cinema's here, and I believe that a movie theater should be part of a cultural plan. So I'll leave it at that, but I would not be supporting the plan as present without attention to conservation period and without a commitment to plan to make a plan for facilities that we need. Leave it at that, thank you.
Counselor Race?
I'll be brief on that. Thank you. I think this is a good first step, but there's obviously been some comments here, and I think those have to be taken into account. And, and I think when I look at a plan like this, I do look at sort of the long term, future, not just the immediate things. And clearly with implementation, there's some immediate, some medium term and stuff. But I think the long-term goals are important for a number of reasons, and, and I highlighted them, I'm not going to repeat them, but I think it gives us as a governing body that has the ability to facilitate grants, to facilitate amenity contribution issues, things like that, something to shoot for. I can't tell anybody what we should have, I'm looking for that feedback, and I'm looking for something like that in the, in the, in the plan. So apart from that, good first step.
Mayor Elliott.
Thank you for this plan. And it was great to see all the engagement that's happened around it. I think what really sits with me is that it is a plan fit for its time and place in the development of our community, and I recognize that. So it's not going to solve all the problems, I think it gets us to that next stage of development. I think one thing I wondered around that sort of eventful community part is that we didn't really acknowledge that we have quite wide shoulder seasons, and I wonder if there's another objective there around developing more sort of year-round events to try and round out. I think in the next iteration of the plan, I would love to see a goal that's like, we've got a regionally significant event every month of the year. I just don't think we're there yet because we don't necessarily have the capacity or the, or the, the space to do it. But I would love to see something to acknowledge expanding into our shoulder season. I, I really like the idea of combining recreation and culture, so that sort of idea of the whole person being addressed in our community, I think that's really important. And as a mom of two creative kids, it'd be nice to see more and more of that. You know, I acknowledge the comments of, of all my colleagues, we're not Coquitlam, we're a smaller community. And, and while council has looked very carefully at the kinds of facilities my colleagues have mentioned, the real estate and facilities master plan focuses on our core needs first. So that's two fire halls, an ops yard, a municipal hall, things that we need to deliver our core services. And so when you think about a plan that is fit for time and place, the community can wait for us to get to those facilities, or the community can take this and run with it. And as Counselor Race mentioned, like, tell us what we need. And so I'm not entirely attached to having a big goal around that in here because quite frankly, if we're going to review this strategy every five years, we're not getting to these facilities in the next five years. It's just an impossibility with two fire halls and an ops yard to build. And so I think we have to be realistic about what we can encompass and what we can bite off. Now, there is funding out there for community groups to do feasibility plans and to further this discussion. And so maybe there's language in here that, you know, is supportive of that kind of effort. But we've got to be real, like, it's not on our radar, not in this term, unless the community brings us a solution that we can get behind. We've got core facilities we need to build. So I, I am clear that those things need to be on our radar, I'm just realistic about when they can happen. And, and a good example of that is our library, which our real estate and facilities master plan says, we don't need to pay attention to the library in the near term. And the library board's like, well, we do. And so they are putting money behind developing their plans and their needs assessment. And that's appropriate, I think, in this context. So I'm not, I'm not as attached to, to seeing that bold statement around facilities planning in this iteration of the plan, although I think there should be a nod to it somewhere. Otherwise, I think I look forward to more community input on the 18th than look forward to seeing it come back to council. Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you. Let's see, the report was, done a lot of, a lot of work here. I was involved in one of the engagements with the, my role with, with the library, and I felt it was an excellent, an excellent process. And I can see that the, speaking to the library board, there was sort of consensus around the table that we really, that the library really saw itself in a lot of these, these areas that they've touched on. Just a couple, a couple of quick points. The glossary, I think, is, is great. We are always, I've been overwhelmed by acronyms in starting this role, and I think that the public is as well as they try to see themselves in these. I do think that the supportive role to empower and enable and potentially partner with, with the interested groups needs to be highlighted and through, through the language in general throughout, throughout the report. And also the Community Enhancement Grant rework that we're, needs to be addressed. I don't know how that's, how you handle that through, through wording, but the, I do think that something to do with, with next steps as far as further work on heritage conservation, potential facilities, I think that if this comes forward, as we work through this, the next steps of this ourselves, and we go to the public with it, I think if it doesn't have at least, as Mayor Elliott said, a nod to the sort of facilities deficits that, that we have in specifically to arts, culture, and heritage, I think that we will have a lot of questions around that. So we need to address that that's an issue that is out there, and then maybe set the over the horizon, given the other work that we have to do unless it's moved forward by, by something coming forward from the community. I also like the, the rec and culture combination. I, I think those go hand in, hand in glove, and I think it makes a lot of sense. So I'll be supporting this going to the next step to, to the public, but I do expect the final to be, have addressed at least a chunk of those issues. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Just for myself, I'll, you know, I've been part of these discussions in some form since before being on council, so I'm very pleased to see the attention to this and to see this moving forward. I, a fair bit of my colleagues' feedback resonates with me. I am very, I think I share some of the mayor's hesitation around taking on full responsibility for the big events. I really, I think it's important to support and facilitate a lot of this stuff, but I think there's incredible value in having it driven by the community. And so that is something in the comments that, that really resonated for me, making sure in that facilitation and enabling role as opposed to the ones driving it. And we may facilitate in a big way at times, but I think the community should own, own the arts. I think though, you know, when I look at our real estate master plans, I agree that we have some core things like fire halls and the ops yard that, that really will be top of mind for a while and top of budget. But there are other things in that plan that are much further out that for me, I would put on the same level or behind some of the things that have come up in the conversation today. And so I would like... of the things that have come up in the conversation today, and so I would like some sort of sense of, of where these other pieces, even if they're a little ways out, something that shows us all where, where we are right now. We may change that over time, but that's something I would, I would like to see, and I'm eager to see what the community feedback is on this, so I will be supporting this. So not seeing any further hands, I'll call question on the motion, on the paper, on the post, oh, sorry, councillor Anderson, the post, and motion carries. Thank you.
Sincerely thank you for all the feedback.
Can anyone name those two guys?
Finning, Finning and...
Wade Stewart in yellow, and I think it's Ed Brown Jr. in black, I can't really tell who's in the hat and his face, but so this is...
Wade probably would.
So Ms. Moore, I apologize for keeping you well past your, your time, but thank you for joining us to, to debrief us on the budget.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a moment here, if I may, to figure out the screens. Thank you, Mayor Council, I'm Christina Moore, Communications Manager for the District. We're going to take a bit of a change in topic here, and I'm here to speak with you about, to debrief the budget engagement that has taken place over the last several weeks. And I just, I just have a few quick slides, really want to take you through a quick recap of the opportunities that we've provided to the community over the course of the last few weeks, actually dating back to late September, so the last few months, to weigh in on the projects and initiatives that are being proposed as part of the 2020 budget and the five-year plan. We began with a, a budget survey back in late September. The goal was really to ensure that the district plans for 2020 were aligning with community, community priorities, and we looked, the goal, we looked at trying to find ways to convey that trade-offs were necessary, understand a little bit about the community priorities to assist in your decision-making, and encourage citizens to get involved. And we had 166 responses back in, to that survey, which was open 20th September, 25th, and October 15th. So resident priorities really aligned with the four pillars of the strategic plan, which was great news. There was very, the planet and the environment ranked number one overall, and then there was very little difference between the rankings of the, the next three, economy and local jobs being number two, housing affordability and diversity ranked number three, and neighborhood connectivity and public spaces ranked number four, but again, the, the margin of difference between those last three were quite small. Other support that we saw prioritized in, in the feedback was support for the built environment, to improve cyclist and pedestrian safety, support for our recreation facilities as well as our fire rescue facilities, emergency planning and mitigation, and transit, both regional and local. Once the 2020 budget was presented to council, spread, all the spreadsheets have been available online to the public for viewing, as well as the development of an interactive tool that the community was able to work through, click through the different, the capital plan, the service level changes, the special projects, look at all of the budget expenditures that were being proposed, as well as a description of the projects that were, that were, description of the projects that were being proposed. Comments were invited on the budget page, which is squamish.ca/budget, and as well, comments were invited to be submitted through our email address, budgetfeedback@squamish.ca, and through any of our social media channels as well. We did receive about, approximately 375 views on this budget tool, that, there's just a screenshot here, but the one available on our website, and the budget page received 835 views, 682 of them were unique. So quite a number of people were accessing our materials and, and viewing what was being Just after Christmas, January 3rd, we were, we presented these budget boards to the community, displays were stationed in our facilities, here at Municipal Hall, at Brennan Park Recreation Center, and the 55 Activity Center. The binder you see on the table there provided all the detail of the projects that were being proposed, and the budget 2020 box that you see there was a comment box for people to leave comments on their own time. So the, the idea being that we were trying to engage people where they were at, at the recreation centers, and, and the visual cue of letting them know that we were in budget season, and trying to encourage them to, to get involved. As you're well aware, council hosted a number of in-person opportunities during the third week of January. The third edition of the council coffee crawl was timed to correspond with the budget engagement. Feedback from, from yourselves was that they were quite well attended, certainly up at Quest, we had a great crowd, which sounded wonderful. The Adventure Center was quite busy, even though the weather wasn't the best that day, and Brennan Park sounds like it was a little bit less successful, certainly busy at the center, but not necessarily with, with people who had much time to stop and shadow the budget, is that a fair comment?
Councillor Race and I are not taking it personally.
So we'll continue to explore those venues, I think, as I say, this has been our third incarnation of the coffee crawl, and we've had some, some bigger successes in terms of crowds, so we'll continue to get your feedback on that and refine the process as we go forward. And then our pub, our Public Information Night was hosted on January 16th, and we had about 40 people in attendance. A comment sheet was provided at the event to help seek feedback in areas such as, how does your budget capture your priorities? If you could fund three things in 2020, what would they be? And if you could reduce funding for three things, what would they be? What do you love about living in Squamish, and what do you not love about living in Squamish? And then asking for additional open comments as well. Some great conversations were had, and we were quite pleased with the turnout of the So on the table, and through, through email to yourselves, you have received all of the comments that have been compiled through all of these processes, with the exception of the, the pre-budget survey, which we presented to you in detail back in the fall. As well, the comments have been shared with our, our core leadership team and general managers to ensure that staff consideration is, is, is given where appropriate and comments are passed along. And the, as well, the comments are all available on our website at that same page, squamish.ca/budget, in order for the public to view them as well. So the comments received were quite varied across many topic areas, they didn't particularly result in any trends or themes, perhaps with the exception of Lyme, where we had certainly a number of citizens attend the Public Info Night and speak for their support of the pickleball facilities. And I, I'd just like to close by expressing our thanks to every, every person, every citizen who took the time to connect on the budget. Certainly, we know that time is tight for, for people, and there is a lot of material to wade through, and I just want to leave with the point that we are always open to improving our process and our engagement opportunities and, and materials, and so we're more than happy to hear any, any feedback that citizens do have in that regard. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions or discussion.
Councillor Race?
Well, not with respect to the survey, this is always health and feedback from year to year, but I'm just curious, just briefly, have staff been just outlining where we're going in the budget process? What's the next step? Because I think there's things still outstanding, I can't list them off my mind, and when that comes back to us and how we're going forward.
To the chair, I can go through that process, and Mr. Russell is in the audience if I miss anything. Right now, finance staff, Mr. Russell primarily, is putting together a draft five-year financial plan, now that we have the, the community feedback and council feedback through all of the workshops, that will be coming forward for council's review next week. And then we have scheduled the first three readings, assuming that that's in alignment with council, first three readings, February 18th. And then adoption, there's a special on the 25th, and that's the total five-year financial plan. Then the final rule comes in, and tax rates are set with council further on in this ring, once that final rule comes in, and the C assessment.
Mr. Paul, do we have the preliminary C assessment information?
Yes, we do, and that's been factored into the five-year, the tax recognition.
Councillor Anderson?
Yes, I had a number of conversations with folks who were needing orientation about where they were, could look for, what they were interested in. And it led me to think about a session that was hosted by the district a number of years ago, when it was CIO Kevin Ramsey, and it was a budget 101 for the public. It was at the Eagle Life Theater, and it was reasonably well-attended. My question is whether we may be able to consider in future some additional, make some additional effort to draw a picture for the public, whether in a setting like the ledge or a special presentation, as to give a budget 101 orientation for these folks that do come out. I had one fellow who was quite, what shall I say, eager and, I'm reading the question here, how does the 2020 budget capture the priorities you are most interested in and concerned about? Well, he couldn't find them, and asked me, and relied on me to say, well, you must have some idea, can you tell me what you were interested in, where you found them? So, but I did find, having attended that session with Mr. Ramsey those years, years ago in the Eagle Life Theater, I found it to be very valuable, and I wonder whether there's something we can do, and I'm not familiar offhand with what we have on our website, our webpage regarding a budget 101, but what is the capital plan? What is the special projects? Break them down and describe the process, or what, if people are interested in the tax hit, where should they look? What, what in particular might, this kind of very high-level orientation, I think for some of the folks that I encountered at the ledge on that evening, that might have been of interest to them. I'll just put that out there, and maybe other, our, our finance department has experience from elsewhere, or some thoughts on that, as to how we can activate the participation of the public by giving them some orient, some additional orientation opportunity on how it's put together, and where they can look for what they're interested in.
So councillor Race?
Well, I'll back that up, I remember that meeting actually, and, and I continue to get a lot of questions about things that we as councillors, I think, all understand and know how the budget comes together, but the difference between utilities, operating budget, capital budget, where does the money come from, from this, where does the money come from in that? What's the theme behind utility increases, it's cost recovery, and things of that nature, I think would be, would be helpful for people, and maybe even, you know, run it at the start of the fall, you know, sort of well in advance of the budget cycle, just to kind of get people up to speed on how a budget actually comes together, because I think there are a lot of people in the community that really don't have that basic understanding of it.
Just my own, to sense, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this budget, you know, my conversations with people, it's, if we are going to do some sort of education piece, maybe not just the budget, I just think, understanding the responsibility and authority of local government is part of a whole thing, which there's, there's a big gap there, and that fits into our strategic plans, maybe something to look at at some point. But I also, you know, over the past several years, I've watched our, our municipality with, with IAP2, and, and the level of engagement on everything throughout the year. You know, I, I think across the board, our engagement has picked up, and, and I guess that's probably why we're seeing, you know, our strategic plan and what people are asking from the budget, all these things are pretty well-aligned, where, whereas, you know, I, I think we're kind of in a way in the budget consultation all year long, and so glad to have, you know, the, the night dedicated to that particular topic, but I, I think it's worth, um, maybe a little bit of a pat, of a pat on the back to everyone here that, you know, I think we're kind of engaging all the time on these things, and it's, it's really good to see them aligning, and we're not hearing completely different things at budget time than we heard when we were doing this policy or that policy. Councillor Stoner?
Yeah, I agree with that, I think budgets are just difficult pieces for community engagement, so I'm actually pretty surprised with the numbers that we got, and thanks everybody who came out and to staff for, for really kind of beating the drum on trying to get people to engage and trying to find diverse ways. One thing that did come to mind in reading through some of the comments, specifically in terms of people trying to identify how the budget aligns with either our OCP or specific council priorities, one piece that I found really helpful were the pieces that were identified as leading towards support for the climate emergency, as they were highlighted specifically through the budget, and that was one piece that I actually turned to frequently when people ask hard questions around like, what is it that council is doing to support your actions on that? And so that made it really easy for me to pinpoint, and so just something to think about going forward in terms of whether we can color code for different components of the council strategic plan, or something along those lines, just to kind of try and facilitate that breakdown of what money's going to where. I know it's not always easy, because different line items may support multiple things, but that was one piece that I found really helpful this time around.
Not seeing any further hands, so thank you very much, we don't need humiliating speeches or anything. So I will now entertain a motion to adjournment, of councillor Herker, of my councillor Satch, all's in favor? Anyone oppose? Nope, it is done. We get terminated.